This meeting is being recorded. So, let's go ahead and I just want to make just a quick announcement real fast, too. This will probably be another long meeting, so I appreciate everyone's patience. We have a lot to cover tonight, and it's all really important, so we do want to spend the time on it. All right, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as written? Do I have a second?
Yes.
In favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Has everyone had a chance to review the meeting minutes? Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes as written? Do I have a second? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And then, do we have any public comment tonight? Okay, fantastic, we will move on to Parks' master plan work. Welcome, Darcy.
Hey, good evening. I'm well, can people hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, volume's all right, good. And luckily, I figured out how to blur my background, so you don't get, you don't have to see my messy office. I'm at the home office tonight. Great.
So, are you wanting to run us through this, or would you like me to get everything started?
Well, I'm happy to jump right in. I will let you know that it's a little difficult to see body language expressions. So you'll, Chair Kara, you're gonna definitely have to let me know if someone is dying to jump in, and I'm not seeing that.
Happy to do that.
Excellent, thank you. And I know that if you did read your minutes from last meeting, or that you recall, I said that I wasn't gonna be here tonight, and lo and behold, I am. So, in talking with staff and the consultant team, we thought it'd be a good idea for me just to be here to help kind of facilitate your discussion around the recommended, the site recommendations. So, what we did last time, last meeting, is that I gave you a preview of the document, because it was in the works, and I knew that we had, you know, many of the kind of bullet points, many of the recommendations for each of the Parks' properties. We had those kind of, they were moving a little bit, but we had really good lists. So I wanted to share, you know, kind of like I think I said, the big ideas for each of the properties when we last were together. So now you have the documents in hand. And, you know, we're still at the point where, you know, we want to get feedback from you, suggestions, refinements, if you will, on the recommendations for each of the parks. And so, we had a start of that conversation, for sure, at the last meeting. I definitely remember some recommendations for Miller Park, and that some of those bullets that we had were seemingly met with some favorability, with, you know, some addition maybe, and, you know, for example, the basketball courts covered. Covered basketball courts would be a great idea there. That's something that we didn't have in the list, but we could certainly add. So, with all of that, it's just a matter of, you know, getting your ideas, your, you know, your reaction to, you know, what we've put in the site recommendations. You know, the idea again here is to articulate a vision for each of the parks, realizing that they each have a slightly different function based on their classification. So we talked about that at the needs assessment phase. And that there are, there's community interest for having more of certain things. And that information came from your survey responses, came from talking to you, to staff, to some select community members, you know, kind of in small group conversation. You know, some desires, some themes were coming through, you know, that public feedback. We looked at the site characteristics of each of the parks. So based on our Parks Designer experience, you know, she took a look at all of your parks and kind of envisioned what could happen and where, and where the site characteristics themselves really lent themselves to certain things. So all of that has really led us to this point with, you know, a handful of recommended items for each of the Parks' properties. And we know that we want to make sure that we have the right things. We have the right things in the right places. Or, and/or, we have the right thing, but it's not exactly the right place. So an example of that is our conversation last time about a dog park, right? We've heard that the current dog park is, you know, is well-used. A second location would be welcomed by some and used. Where might that go, right? And so we had a conversation of whether or not, oh no, why am I blanking out now on Commerce Drive? The Commerce Drive property, that that might be a place for it. And we had, we started to have that conversation like, well, you know, we've heard that might be too wet, or, you know, maybe that's not the ideal place for that. So continuing that conversation, then it'd be a matter like, well, is it still kind of on the top list? Like the things you would want to see? If it kind of remains in the mix, then where? So with that, I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take a breath and get some comments and reaction from you on that overview.
Anyone have any thoughts, comments?
I just have a quick comment you made on Heritage Park. You talked about the charging station location. Those are already under construction, so that needs to change.
Thank you, yes, and we also got comments from staff to that effect, so that makes sense.
Would it be possible for us to just kind of go from one park to the next? Kind of, you can explain what you're proposing and give us a chance to kind of really...
You need to talk more into the mic, I don't know that she...
Would it, would it be possible for us to maybe kind of, you know, we don't have that many parks, particularly developed parks, and these are important decisions. And it'd be nice to take enough time to kind of have you go through each park, and say, this is what we're proposing, and then ask for feedback at that time.
Sure.
If we have time for that.
I have a hand up from Jeanette, go ahead.
Hi, so, so Darcy, are you going to, I didn't see any type of budget with these recommendations. And if it's, this is not the report, is there gonna be a proposed kind of budget idea when proposing your recommendations to each of the, each of the parks?
Yes, this isn't, isn't the document for that, but that is our next step. That's our next step in this discussion with the advisory committee. And also, we're gonna start to get into it with presenting some kind of just very big picture funding issues. Basically, how your Parks Department, your Parks facilities are funded today. And then getting to, you know, opportunities for, you know, for future funding and future improvements. So, we have kind of a phased approach to this project. It's a graphic that we've used previously to kind of explain where the project is heading. And so, the preliminary goals, policies, we talked about that at the last meeting. The site strategies, the proposed system map, this is all kind of in Phase 3, which we're squarely in today. Phase 4 is creating the action plan. And in order to have an action plan that is realistic, the funding is part of that. So that's, that's coming up.
Okay, thank you.
And so, and that's, so just to kind of get back to my opening comments, really, this is, this is, this document, this site recommendations is, you know, in an ideal world, yes, this is the vision for Heritage Park. These are the things that we would like to continue to improve or to add. And just to make sure that that's right, does that mean that that commits you to building it tomorrow? Or spending, you know, a portion of your current budget on it? No, we're not there at that point yet.
Right, so would you like to begin by just listing off a park? Or do we want to go through the proposed system map first? It would be Page 3.
And so I think we talked about the proposed system map last time, right? And this is really an identification of what types of parks you have today, and what is not currently covered, if you will, by your current system. So there are areas, the AD acquisition and development areas, they're just underserved by the current city park system. So we have, you know, we have information about that neighborhood Park 4 in the far north, the area that's Neighborhood Park 5, you know, those are areas that, in the case of the northern area, you know, it's impacted by natural constraints. There's not going to be a lot more residential development in that area. You know, similarly, the southwest portion of the city, or future city, you know, that area also is highly parcellized. It's going to be, you know, there's gonna be some residential growth there, but maybe not a lot of opportunities for land acquisition for a park. So, this map really is saying, you know, these are areas that are underparked. The recommendation would be to find opportunities to find parcels, or to find, you know, a portion of future development to have, to house, you know, to accommodate green space, a park, mostly for the benefit of immediate residents, right? A neighborhood park is really there to support current and future planned residential houses, you know, people. And not a, not a, you know, larger draw, for example. So, some conversation about that with city staff, about the opportunity there. You know, that, that might not be something that's an action item, like the city's gonna go out and inquire. It might be more of a partnership, let's look for the opportunities when those areas develop, when a lot splits that's large enough, you know, those type of things. So having those in the plan would provide, you know, city staff in the future to have that conversation. Like, oh, by the way, we don't have a park here, our map shows us, it'd be great to have one, you know, and you're developing, you know, seven acres, what do you think? Some land there maybe for a pocket park.
Any thoughts, questions?
Yeah, I think otherwise, the D's are important there, because Commerce Drive is, you know, we flagged that for needing development, Grabhorn property, Crest Creekview. Those are either underdeveloped in the case of Creekview, or not yet developed in the case of Commerce and Grabhorn. And again, that kind of shines a spotlight on those areas that, yes, they're part of your system, but they don't have, you know, anything or a lot going on by way of, you know, park facilities.
Have a question.
Mike, sorry, hold on, Mike, go ahead.
I was just gonna make a comment, you know, Creekview's a wonderful piece of property, but as I recall, it was all in a floodplain, and the biggest hurdle, well, there were two big hurdles with that park. A lot of the neighbors didn't really want to see it developed at least a couple of years ago. The other one was there's no parking, it's really concerning, so.
There was also, I can't see who is online, who is asking?
Me, it's Jeanette.
Oh, Jeanette, go ahead, sorry.
That's okay, so, Darcy, just to clarify, we going, going by the, by council, it was mentioned before council goals is that to have a walking distance, and I think that's what your, this proposed graph is about. Does that take precedent over, for example, a park? Because I did see there's some improvements that you have, some recommendation for Heritage Park and Veterans Park. And so, are you looking at, would you propose recommendations on what can be done today, tomorrow, within the year versus down the line? That's my first question. And then, according to our new, new goals for 2023, 4.3 is creating funding mechanisms for park and maintenance and development. So, are you also, your future proposal going to be recommending funding mechanisms as well?
Yes.
Okay. And, and since I, just, so I won't keep interrupting, another of our goals is also to prioritize upgrades in existing parks and ADA standards. And the only ADA that I saw in the report was Heritage that was mentioned, and that already has ADA standards. So, I didn't see that in the recommendations for the other parks.
Right, and so with that, that's a very good observation. And I would ask then, with this group and your knowledge of the park system, are there other parks where that clearly needs to be put on the recommendation list? And we don't have to answer that now, you know, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but that seems like both a really great overarching goal, but for the specific recommendations, it will be even more impactful, I think, identifying which parks could use that attention now.
I think that it kind of looks different for different parks. Like, for example, I'm looking at Heritage Park right now, and it says there's ADA accessible paving and tables, there's ADA accessible restroom, and there's two ADA compliant spaces, but there is not ADA compliant playground equipment. So, I think that's, that's the challenge, is that there are, it's, some parks are part of the way there, but not all the way there. And so I think we would need to have that discussion of, do we want to go all in on one park? That's, or do we want every park, I mean, obviously, our ultimate goal should be ADA accessibility for every child to be able to have an opportunity at every park. But that's discussed, because that would probably have to be, not necessarily prioritized, but graded in. Yes, you guys have thoughts on that? Go ahead, JJ.
I think those are very valid thoughts. I guess my, so I actually have cerebral palsy, so I've got a mild case of it, but I do understand being disabled. And I think the challenge is, is that so much ADA equipment is very expensive. I mean, it's just so ridiculously expensive. And then the other question that was brought up a couple of years ago was, you know, how many disabled children do we actually have in the area? And I think that, you know, while I think it's important that we have accessibility for all children, all people, I'm a big fan of that. I think there's also a practical aspect of it we need to consider.
I would say that when I look at accessible playground equipment, that it's not necessarily just going to be only for children with special needs. Every child can be able to use that space. And I think Portland parks are a really great example, like they have, they have just flat surfaces. They don't have wood chips, they have, there's this fantastic park that has kind of like uphill, and you can actually, it has like a wide enough pathway to be able to wheel up the hill. Then kids can also, like, kids who are not in wheelchairs can also use it. And same with a lot of swings. And so I think that every child would be able to use it, but it's also, you're right, it's expensive. So how do we, how do we grade that in while being mindful of all the other upgrades?
And I appreciate that, that gives me a lot of clarification. So, I think that with Heritage Park especially, because you've got, you know, the library and some of those other activities going on there, that would be a good one to at least focus on for the time being.
I would agree, probably starting out with our bigger community-wide parks, where we know there's gonna be some bigger, like, bigger events. We want everybody there in the city, and not only that, but everybody who comes to feel they have a space for them within that area. Go ahead, Ian.
For planning purposes, I would say that each and every park we talk about, we need accessibility for all ages and abilities, whether the priorities...
Right, it just...
Individual park.
Yeah. It just may have to be tiered in order to make that happen, but I agree, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think when you have the funds to upgrade or add on or build new...
Yeah.
Can I speak into the microphone so we can hear better, please?
Sorry, I was saying, as you upgrade, add new, and/or buy brand-new facilities, that needs to be part of the conversation. At this point in time, would be going backwards as a community if that wasn't a priority.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, and I'll point also to the vision, goals, policies, and action of that document that was provided for your last meeting. And one of the policy, policies is increase accessibility and inclusivity. One of the action items under that is continue to approve ADA accessibility of a facility's, including but not limited to improving parking areas, paths, playground servicing, et cetera. So that, that as a policy is articulated, which again, great, great foundation. And what's really, what's challenging, and you're definitely getting to the next step, is prioritization, right? So that's the overarching goal, you know, that's the overarching, like, direction. However, then we have the, you know, the reality check of available funding, even potential funding, future funding, and, you know, what are you gonna do first, right? So, a policy like this can, can help you make smart decisions about, say, playground replacement. When that time comes, then, you know, you're going to make choices that are going to fulfill as best possible these policies. But what, what we're getting to tonight really is, and again, it was nice, I heard you say, you know, that, that we should really focus on Heritage. We've got a good start already there, and there are improvements that can be made over time, but that's really should be our focus. Regardless of trying to make accessibility built into all improvements always, you know, perhaps really having that focus on Heritage to begin with is a good, a good start.
Yeah, Paul?
Yeah, I mean, we kind of keep going back to budgeting, but budgeting should not be driving this. What should be driving it is our priorities, because there's a lot of funding mechanisms out there. For instance, there's, there's no bike racks in any of our parks, pretty much, okay? Oh, well, we can't afford it, blah, blah, blah. Well, I just did a quick Google search, people for bikes, they have grants, accessible grants for bike racks and things like that, up to $10,000 a year. Same with ADA, there's lots of grants out there. So, we shouldn't just say, oh, well, we gotta do the budget first and see, blah, blah. I think more of, we did make our priorities, what's important, and ones that are really high on the list, we need to seek funding, whether it be our funding or elsewhere. And then that will help dictate where in that list or when we actually do it. But we can't just, I don't like to continually go back and go, well, you know, it's gonna cost a lot of money or whatever. If it's still a priority, we should put it, keep it on a priority. And then, again, maybe even look at other funding mechanisms, or it has to maybe go down a little bit until we do have the money. But I don't want it to be the cat wagging the dog, or the dog wagging the tail, or whatever.
I would, I don't necessarily think that we would not put in ADA equipment, because I think we would just have to say, like, where do we want to start? Like, how would we prioritize that, and what would be our first, like, that's, that's all. I mean, I think, I think everyone's right, I think we need it. And we would be going back in time if we did not have it. But it's a matter of, okay, do we, do we start by just putting swings in? But that would almost be pointless when you have wood chips in half of our playgrounds, because, because potentially, somebody wouldn't be able to actually get in there.
Right, and I think going to a policy, oh, sorry.
Sorry, Darcy, Isaac first.
I would just say too, we haven't really talked about budget for that reason. So the prioritization exercise is, that all comes before we talk about budget and capital for that reason. Because we did hear you guys talking about that, that was one of the things we made sure is that priority comes before budget.
And even before priority is, do we have the right things? So now we're back, we're back on the recommendations list, right? So I brought this full circle, and maybe we can start with Heritage and the list on Page 5. Again, you know, I noticed reviewing this, you know, this list really starts with programming and not, and not improvements, you know? But more, I guess, it's kind of more of what's there. There's not, there's not a huge change proposed for Heritage. But, you know, like, that third bullet is, look for, look for ways of having, you know, more activities in that area. You know, I'm looking at a bike skills area, parkour equipment, you know, something to climb on, something to hang on. You know, are those the type of things that seem to be a good, a good idea, like for enhancements to Heritage?
Well, just for the record, we spent, what, three-quarters of a million dollars to renovate Heritage, and the playground equipment was constructed with handicapped children in mind to some degree. And it's probably the best equipment we have, and we added new stuff at Concombre. So, I think it's fair to say we, you know, maybe mention that we need more, more equipment like that, but I think it would be valuable to go through the process of kind of just hearing what you're recommending for each of the parks, and then from that information determine what we think priorities are. I think, say, this in this park, and suggest one thing without going through that view is premature itself.
Are you, so you're thinking, so these are the suggestions for the individual parks?
Right.
For Heritage?
Yeah, I think we should go through each of those.
Yes.
And then, and then after that, then determine priorities.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, that's just my thought, it'd be nice to kind of...
I don't, I don't think today's priorities, correct? We're, today, we're just saying, do we want this, do we not, and would something else be in there? Go ahead.
I just wanted to give some perspective on Heritage Park, because I'm probably the one that uses it most up here. We've been doing the movies in the park for the past five years. Started out really small, Mike Sykes was a real big part, and pushing me in that direction. And every year, it's gotten bigger and bigger. And the reason why it's been so successful is that I've been able to successfully partner with the library, because the library's always looking to have more activities in addition to checking out books to make it a more useful organization for the community. So, I think the suggestions you have here are interesting. It just, it takes people, and I don't know right now if there are the volunteers there to actually support all of those things in the near future.
I think one of the great things about this is we don't have to consider that right now. We're squarely in Paul's court, right? Tonight, we're not, we're not looking at how do we make this reality, how do we fund it? We're looking at what do you want, like, best case of money, time wasn't an issue, are these the right things in this spot? That's, that's really where we're trying to focus, is just, is this list the correct thing?
So, my first thought is, I don't necessarily think bike skills would be appropriate in this, that particular park. So, I, I mean, I know we've talked a lot about bike skills, I think it would be great to have it in one of our parks, but I don't think it'd be appropriate for this one.
There's no room.
There's no room. So I think that could be easily something that we could cross off. I love the idea of adding a low berm to separate the park from the railroad track. I think that is a constant ask. I also actually really like the idea of maybe like some outdoor ping pong tables, or maybe like permanent outdoor chessboards, or something where people could sit out and have it as a community option. I don't know that, I think that parkour equipment is interesting. I was trying to look at other types of parkour, teen parkour, but I didn't see anything that popped up. But I also don't know if that would fit so well into the Heritage Park. Thoughts? Oh, sorry, Ian.
To start off a little big picture, I think Heritage Park should be Scott Puce's art of our city. It should be our city square. It already is with these events such as, you know... And with a little bit of formulation of the outdoor space itself, I think it needs some more plaza space. And plaza space is super awesome to have, outdoor ping pong, outdoor food.
I'm sorry, can you speak more to the microphone, we can barely hear you.
Sorry. I was saying, I think it would be great to have outdoor ping pong and foosball and chess tables. There's a wonderful company down in Roseburg that makes concrete. There's a wonderful company down in Roseburg that makes concrete outdoor amenities like that. Saying you need to use them, but are a lot of options that last out in our weather for a long time. But putting those things outside, coordinating so, so that the teens have an out, the teens have an indoor space inside the library. Now is an outdoor space. And then to formalize that plaza space so that food carts can come in. So hookups, electricity, those kind of things that are needed for food carts.
We actually have those in place. So we have had food carts come for the different events. You know, the.
I, I, I understand.
Yeah, so I mean.
Saying when you formulate and you're going in and you're gonna do a redesign to add some things onto this, put those in the proper spaces in order to maximize your efficiency of your space. You can create kind of outdoor spaces that you want.
So I guess something to think about was if you had your dream food cart setup for movies in the park, how would we do that?
Well, I would say that right now, we've actually got a lot of great electrical outlets. I think that the people that originally designed the park did, were, were smart in considering having, because that's the biggest thing. People need electricity for their food carts. And so that is actually.
You feel like it's sufficient?
It's, it's really good, actually.
Uh. I would just say, I guess my priority is, this is the most recently completed park. There was a lot of, not put into it. Not a lot of open space there. I think if you really go out there and look, you know, you start taking away some of that grassy area. It's not gonna be suitable for community events. And to me, one of the biggest needs is some more picnic tables. There's only the number out there because the city couldn't afford, a lot of those were donated by different companies. But it's not near enough and it'd be nice to be able to make it more, you know, more usable with, with those kind of amenities. And they're not that expensive. But, you know, to me personally, we have a lot more significant. This is our, probably in the best shape of any park we have.
Okay, JJ, go ahead.
Yeah, I think the picnic tables are a really essential part of it now that we're getting the charging stations installed. You know, part of the appeal of those stations is that people have to stay there for 30 to 40 minutes to charge their vehicle. So having a place to have a picnic, you know, go to the library, I mean, those things are gonna become really important in the relatively near future.
I can see that bullet, that reconfigure angle in parking changing to, you know, more, more seating, you know, more, more areas to kind of enjoy while you're waiting, right?
Ian, go ahead.
I, I would just like to add, I think as far as the outdoor space is concerned and mostly the lawn area, which I would, I'm in the boat that there's too much lawn area. In order to have picnic tables and/or the flexibility to provide outdoor tenting, you need to build that into the areas. And you can't have picnic tables in the lawn and expect heavy use and then not bring in massive maintenance issues. Can't put tents up in a lawn area unless you're Portland and you have lots of money to reseed it every time after the event. To build in flexibility for these outdoor events, I think is something we should have in, in these recommendations.
So not having improvements that can't be, can't be moved? So that, is that what you mean?
I, I would say build in, improve, like the flexibility for large events to happen.
So we, we've had four to 500 people at the movie nights. So, and that's actually considered a very large event for that space. But talking about parking for a second, one of the things that we found out when we were looking to do the charging stations by the library is that there's two really large handicap spots. I mean, they're, they're ginormous. And so one of the things we talked about was reducing that to regular sizes, obviously with the accessible part next to it. But that would actually create, you know, a couple more parking spaces. But the other issue regarding more and more people coming, which is great, is parking. So you've basically got parking in front of the library. You've got parking at City Hall. You've got that parking area behind the Watts House. And then you've got street parking. So the other consideration is, in doing big events, is not upsetting the neighbors and also allowing people to access the park.
Head ball?
Um, I just learned today that it looks like we're gonna get an annex of the property just north of City Hall, right here, that we're gonna be able to get parking spaces. Any other property that's ODOT slash railroad? Looks like we're gonna be able to get, yeah, yeah. Looks like the, the city is trying, it looks like it's gonna go through a vacation, be able to get parking there, which would then support more downtown events.
Okay, so let's go back to, let's circle back to making sure, what Ian's comment, that we have, that we can put tents up without it destroying.
We did it during the 100 year celebration. We had tents all over the place.
I, I understand, but if you want multiple events happening throughout time, they'll not, they'll not hold up.
So for example, the waterfront in Portland, they have to come in with tons of sand after every event, re-sand and reseed. And so I think the concern is making sure that preserved amenities have like the grass and stuff while doing the development. It's kind of what I'm hearing is, building in a mindful way to make sure that we do this season after season. These things don't have to be.
Yeah, I mean, I love the events we're having. I want to see more of them. Everybody probably is in that same boat. The more you do, what we have there now is not going to last. Then we're gonna be partying in the mud. It's fact.
So I guess the question would be, how would we word that to build something like that? In?
I have a question real quick.
Go ahead, Paul.
I mean, if we are gonna make this our living room, it would make sense, and JJ, you would know best, that we, like for events like yours, we actually closed the street. You know, that's a short portion and that could be our area for those things. Wouldn't have to worry about reseeding, whatever. It'd be very walkable, which I think would be really cool. Just an idea would.
Ah, that would be.
Probably work, but.
Well, the other thing I was just gonna mention is that typically what Scapoose has done with very large events, when they had the boosters doing their big events, is that a lot of times they take place in Veterans Park. Just a much bigger space, it can handle the traffic a lot better. So that, that has traditionally been that use in the past.
That's actually what our parks designer also looked at. And particularly with the addition of Grabhorn and that idea of potentially, you know, viewing those three parks, Concomode Veterans and, and Grabhorn as, as really the city's event space. And again, we're, we're looking at a 20-year plan. So it's not to say that Heritage wouldn't still have a role in, in having community events. But as a growing city, you're already talking about some growth issues that might really, you know, those, those larger events would definitely need more space, more parking.
Okay, I don't want to spend too much time on this. We have a lot of parks to get through, so.
Any other, well, I just wanna, with any questions, if there's any other comments that haven't been aired, to make sure everybody gets a chance at airtime. This, we, we really don't have to move through, we want to make sure we get everybody's.
Yep.
If there's anything else.
Any other, any additional comments?
Yeah, I guess what, yeah, what I'm hearing is you, you don't want to program, you don't want to have improvements in Heritage that would prevent, you know, active use of the lawn space, of the open space and allowing for tents. I, I think that's what I'm hearing. I'm not sure that that's, yeah.
I think we don't want to have anything that, that kind of uses up too much of that space. But we also want to potentially build things in that help maintain that space. If possible, is that?
That sounds more of like an operations and maintenance issue than it is a sort of improvement issue.
Am I hearing you right, Ian?
My personal opinion on this park is it should be a town square. Look at even similar sized communities, but larger communities, which we will be eventually. A town square is a place where community gathering happens. And such events that use lawn space like outdoor movie nights and other things are right sized for certain groups. Like, I went to an outdoor movie and as soon as you got a little ways away from the walkway that takes you to the fountain, you couldn't see the movie anymore. So at that point, why not make that hardscape? So you can utilize that for things such as ping pong tables and picnic tables and outdoor events and covered spaces. My thought is that as a recommendation, it should go towards providing more flexible outdoor space for events. I know that's just dumb lingo, but as a designer of outdoor spaces, not dumb lingo, it provides for a designer to look at it and say, okay, they want a flexible outdoor space for events. Here's multiple ways we can do that when you get into the design of it. Say we don't want to affect the certain material that's out there is telling the designer that you don't want to even go down that route to explore it. So in, as a recommendation here, I would say leave it open ended. Provide flexibility for outdoor events as, as one of the recommendations.
Okay with that, but I'm not okay with eliminating some of the, the green area. It was, it was, if you had been here before that park was.
Mike, talk to your.
If you had been here before that park was built, it was nothing, it was an old road bed and it was, we spent lots of money to make that into a nice area. And what I've noticed is a lot of people love, like bringing their families to kind of circle around that, that fountain during the summer months. And, you know, I think they enjoy that soft grasp. So, I mean, I like your idea of other things, but real hesitant is, you know, there's enough concrete in town, I think. It's my thought.
I, I'm not gonna, I don't want to debate this. It's a design conversation and I just don't want to shoehorn us into a certain recommendation going forward.
So in a general term, you're saying put something in there like explore other, I think you kind of, what you said made sense.
I'd say provide flexibility in materials to be able to.
Add other.
Provide for community events, seasonal, year-round community events.
Okay.
Right, and that, that's kind of the vision, right? That, that sort of vision language and then some of the more specific things like introduce or add or look for opportunities to, those, those get to be more specific. I, I don't think anything here is really at odds with that idea of flexibility and, and having, you know, a space that accommodates many different activities. It, it does today. It could be enhanced with maybe some of these suggestions in the future. Yeah, I, I think, I think we could put that language in and it's, it's consistent with kind of what, what's in the future vision statement, which we haven't really talked about. But yeah, I, I think the, the concern I have is, you know, the idea of adding more space for seating, for picnic tables, you know, that, that seems to make sense, especially related to the area close to the charging stations. But that will, of course, require some space, right? And, and that space becomes less flexible as you start tying things down, right? And securing them to the earth. But I think that there's enough room there to cut, to, to make some of these, you know, pretty modest improvements over time. As long as that's what, you know, seems to be proper for the space.
I think ultimately, not, not considering a bike skills area, not considering parkour, maybe just light extra tables, possibly ping pong, possibly outdoor chess or outdoor, did you say outdoor foosball? In, in some area, but also keeping the bulk of the space open so that we can have those events.
Yeah, and I, I know that the idea for, for parkour, bike skills, it really was tying into the skate park, the fact that teens are hanging out there anyway. You know, that, that's sort of building onto that, that area. But some of these more, again, more flexible things could also go in that space and, and bike skills. I, I agree, that seems a bit ambitious unless you don't want the green space. And we're here, I'm hearing you, you would definitely like to keep some of that green space for flexible events. And, yeah, yeah, okay. I, that's good direction. Veterans?
Veterans.
Veterans. Okay, so I think that the big kind of takeaway from our, our parks designer and our other parks planner and myself in, in talking about this park is that there is green space available that is actually being used for like soccer games and, and things that are not formally planned for that park. But definitely there's, there's some availability still, if you will. And so that's where the idea of, of, you know, providing for a short course in golf, disc golf or pickleball. That that would be the area that, that could, you know, could hold those activities.
Do you have any thoughts on this list?
Uh, can you please clarify where you were gonna put disc golf?
Well, there's, there's quite a bit of lawn space. I'm trying to think of my north, south, east, west. How do I explain it? Does it, does that not, does that not seem like there is space there, Paul? Is that the concern?
I don't think there's space there for disc golf. If there was, it'd only be a few holes. You gotta remember that disc golf, it's not dangerous, but at the same time, it is a really hard plastic disc. So I mean, you want to be able to throw it pretty damn hard. Excuse my words. And the, like those areas are kind of flex areas, which I think people use for all types of different things. So putting a disc golf, I mean, you probably only get two or three holes there, to be honest, and be quite lacking. You know, I think the Grabhorn area, if, what I don't know, maybe that or some, some other places. But that might be a tough bit, in my opinion.
Is somewhere that we would still want to consider putting pickleball?
So actually, I, I was pretty against pickleball, but I was wrong. I think pickleball is great. The problem is the noise.
Yes.
And so, and it's interesting, I, I ride my bike around Soves Island every week. And the, the only place that I've seen pickleball without any complaints is on Soves Island, which is next to a school, 100 acre field and, and nothing else. So it's almost like I, and I don't, I mean, I have a brother-in-law that plays racquetball. So I just wonder if you're gonna do pickleball, if you would have it be enclosed like racquetball courts so that you somehow minimize the noise issue.
Well, it, I guess my thought about this park is that it's already has like baseball and potentially other soccer field. So it's already noise coming from this area. So I think the neighbors might already be anticipating some noise. Isaac?
I think one of, not to interject myself into this too much, but I think one of the big things about this is less about how we design these amenities and more about what's appropriate at a place. So we, because we can, we can always, you know, if, if this is the right place in the city for pickleball.
Yeah.
And the noise is an issue, we can always design our way out of that problem.
Okay.
Always make those things happen later down the road. So we don't need to design these tonight. I think the idea is to look at these recommendations and say, does this feel like the right place? Pickleball. And, and if it is the right place and, and we get there in five years and the noise is an issue, we can design our way out of the noise. We can do these things about, are these the right amenities in the right place at the right park? So like pickleball, if to an outsider, look, or not pickleball, but disc golf, look great, right? It seems to me like there's a lot of space. I don't play it. Paul does. Paul says it's not a good place for it. There's not enough space. Disc is starting to get lost. That's, that's the kind of feedback. Yeah.
Yeah, well, and, and looking at the area, oh, sorry.
Uh, sorry, one comment in here. Terry, go ahead.
I thought there was already plans in place for three options at Veterans Park as far as that Grabhorn property. And my second opinion on the pickleball is that a very nice place would be just the east end of the new Annex Gym at the middle school. That you have a highway on one side, you got a grocery store on the other side, you've got the school on the other side. You're not gonna, you're gonna have huge exposure to everybody that drives through Scapoose. Beautiful thing to do at nighttime when people see all the activity that you could create.
At, at the middle school, though?
At the middle school when it, if it ever changes.
Well, I think we are hoping to get that in sooner. So we, I think we have to make a decision of, because if, if we say, oh, no pickleball in any of these places and especially. of, because if, if we say, oh, no pickleball in any of these places, and especially if we don't own the school, then, then we have, then we might be missing out on being able to get pickleball. Go ahead.
At, at that point, I would say that the parks that we currently have don't really represent a good pickleball place.
Mr. Garrett?
So I, I think there's a way to state desire for pickleball in your master plan, which will qualify you for future grant opportunities and you don't even have to say it's at this location or any location. It's, we want pickleball in our Parks and Rec program in Scappus somewhere.
Okay.
That will qualify you. Makes it a qualifier for a grant that says, where is it in your master plan? And it can be not associated with any location whatsoever. Yeah, I think Terry makes a very good point. But finding that location, I don't even think you have to worry about that. If you just know, hey, pickleball's the thing. We want to work, get it in there and you don't have to worry about, oh, we lost our opportunity. Just put it in the master plan somewhere.
Okay.
On the first page or the last page.
Okay. Mr. Backus?
Yeah, the one question I had, with the school district, looking at this bond and turning the whole new midst or the mid school into a sports complex, I might ask if they're gonna be doing pickleball, if that's something on their radar too, next to the tennis courts or somewhere around there. Just so we're communicating. So, I mean, probably don't need two.
So maybe we don't put it necessarily into this park, but we just put it into the master plan and then we just kind of let that unfold.
Yeah, and their plans are getting close, so they'll have an answer pretty soon.
Paul?
I, I would like to see, put it somewhere, because I don't want it to get lost. I think that the noise thing is being incredibly amplified right now, especially by like Oswego and some urban environments where literally it's like right next to another place.
Yeah.
I mean, I know areas that, that, you know, they're in the tennis courts, the tennis courts are, you know, within seeing distance of other houses, just like veterans and not a problem. I just, I just think, I'd hate to just say, okay, it's a, it's a, you know, we'll put a little check mark by it. I mean, like, we're not designing parks now.
If, yeah, well, then if we potentially put it in as pickleball, because that seems to be one, probably one of the top locations that we would ultimately choose. Like, are, would we be okay if, if a pickleball court landed at Veterans?
It's our sports complex right now.
Yeah. Go ahead, Ian.
This is absolutely the park for pickleball.
Yeah.
This is absolutely the park for horseshoes. Absolutely the park for bocce ball space. This is Scappus's community park. It's got the activities, it's got baseball, it's got soccer, it's got a player, it's got a dog park. It's absolutely the spot for those kind of things.
To the mic.
Sorry. Ian, have you ever been to that Concomly? You know, I, I love the thought about putting a bridge there. That was one of the thoughts we had, but you know, they're expensive, they're $300,000 plus. But there, there's, that park has a tremendous amount of area along the creek there. It's in the floodplain. That would be perfect for, for amenities, actually, at Concomly.
Yeah.
I mean, horseshoes, I love horseshoes. I'm terrible at it, but you know.
Concomly is absolutely the place to put horseshoes.
Yes.
It is.
None of these parks can, can have these
Yes.
Different characteristics. Put it in as recommendations for all of them. I mean, we have to put them all in when it gets to the design, but it's like, is this the right place for pickleball? Absolutely is the right place.
Well, you know, another cheap, uh, we had somebody come in that wanted to, the, the girls volleyball team wanted to put in a volleyball court down in that floodplain area in Concomly, but they never were able to put it together. But again, another
Another potential.
Really inexpensive creation opportunity, which is good.
Let's go back to Veterans so we can, so we can go through all these. Any other, so first of all, do we want to leave pickleball in here?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we're leaving pickleball in here. So, um,
But not, not disc golf.
But not disc golf. Um, we do want to really try to make them very cohesive. Do eventually want a bridge. Let's see. And then we want to increase the size and the complexity of the, because for how big that park is, that play area is relatively small. So are we okay with eventually building that up, making that more ADA compliant? As well, because it's also not very well. Yeah, okay. Providing new paths, trees, it's hard to say no to trees. More shade, we've discussed more shade. Um, and then, yeah, building a sidewalk. Do we have anything else that we would like to add to Veterans?
Oh, and the next page is making a formal parking lot where people are kind of already parking on the grass.
Oh, yes. Um, go ahead, Ian.
I have, I have one more comment and it, it has to do with Veterans and Grabhorn and other, and Concomly altogether is Isaac, maybe this is more of a civil engineering side of things, but have, have we considered conditional additional flood storage as a element to these parks in areas where it's not gonna adversely affect these site improvements that are on there?
Yeah.
Say when there's a very large storm event and it's already over the creek banks, we're gonna provide some areas that aren't already in the floodplain to, as a community benefit, to store more floodwater.
So I think that the question, the answer to the question comes in two pieces. So I know there's been a lot of work by the Scappus State Watershed Council along the creek in Veterans, laying those banks back. And by doing that, you know, you are increasing that capacity. We're talking about more passive, so additional swales, additional under roadway storage and, and retention. Um, you know, as we go and develop these roads, that's something we do consider. But as an intentional part of this particular exercise, not yet. So that is something that could be recommended as we make these developments to look at additional excess capacity. I know that the Watershed Council is gonna continue to operate along Veterans. They have another plan right now. I think it's Reach F is what they're calling it. They're gonna be doing some more remediation at the north end of Veterans. Or maybe it's even into Grabhorn to lay those banks back and kind of increase capacities. Things up to the water temperature. Yeah.
I was gonna say that, um, I was with the city when we actually put $100,000 into laying those banks back on both the Veterans Park and also with Buxton. And so their plan is to do the Grabhorn piece next and they have a scheduled to do the whole creek all the way up. And you know, there was a dream of having a trail along that creek all the way up, up the canyon, but, uh, you know, you run into a lot of private property challenges. But, uh, one of the, one of the selling points of, of mitigation, they got a BPA grant was, was to add more shade for the fish. And that was the trump card. And then two for flood control because um, I don't know if you've been in Scappus when that area flooded, but on the other side of Grabhorn, and it goes right up into those neighborhoods and homes. And, and I, I think it really helped that we did that project. I think it needs to continue. The other thing it does is it makes that whole area more accessible to the kids and the public to walk down to the creek.
Yeah, I, I, additional flood storage is only for the really large events. And being a property owner on the creek, I've experienced those flood events personally. There are many, many communities out there that have worse conditions where they build like walkways along their water, waterways, right? But the walkways aren't above the 100. So when floods are happening, that walkway is just not usable. We could do the same with a lot of these, these green open spaces in these parks that were designed. As long as they're not artificial turf, don't have some substructure under them with really good baseball fields, would not be good for additional flood capacity. Um, I, I think it's something, the town's gonna get bigger, it's gonna grow up around the creek. Flooding is only gonna get a little bit worse. We take advantage of our open spaces in our community and say, ride as much flood capacity as you can. I think that's a good use of our resource as parks.
I'd like to ask a question. It kind of just got slipped over about paving over the overflow parking. I'm not saying I'm against it or anything, but you know, if you look on priorities and spending money and such, I mean, it's already working as an overflow parking. Um, I'm sure it would cost a good penny to pave it, really not getting anything. So I, myself, I, looking at that, I put it very low priority, because you're basically spending money for not getting anything in return besides a pavement.
And we've also had some concern about paving in the past, because we've wanted to pave it because it's definitely not safe how it is right now during large events with the parking on the side. Um, so have there been concerns in the past about, about actually paving that?
So from our perspective, I understand from Public Works that as we add amenities, we're gonna be adding more people. And that area is used as parking, but it's not ADA. It's seated, it can become a mud bin. So as of the fact that we will eventually need more parking capacity there, because we don't have transit. If we add Grabhorn, depending on how that happens, what kind of parking is there? If we add all these paving, that's kind of one of those public improvements that sometimes are bound to be. Um, I don't mean like bound to, but like so my understanding from Public Works is that we're gonna consider that a parking lot, we're gonna end up having.
Okay. Fair enough. Any other discussion on this, on Veterans?
Um, sorry, just to go back to the flood capacity, um, I just want to put my two cents in and agreeing that I think that would be a really beneficial thing to add, especially if one of our bullet points here is to add paths along the creek and potentially a bridge over the creek. Um, any sort of like extra flood capacity to manage those big floods, I think would be really super beneficial in terms of long-term maintenance. That can be a pretty big nightmare. Um, when those big floods come in and we're talking about adding trees, adding vegetation. Obviously such a wonderful thing to do, but that just adds extra hazards or maintenance that, that staff is gonna have to deal with. So having the ability to divert water into some other bio swales or some sort of basin type situation, I think would be, would be a really beneficial thing in the long term.
So that's not necessarily my expertise. So what, how, would we need to write that in for this?
I think that out of this meeting, you know, Darcy's probably taking notes.
Okay.
And how we phrase those things or include them through the plan, like that, that, that doesn't seem like a comment to me that's limited just to like a comment generally, right? And so as we go to revise these documents, I think we can phrase those, we can understand what you're meaning. So you're saying, we want to add additional flood pass. We can figure out how to phrase that and integrate it into the master plan.
Perfect. All right.
The exact phrasings I don't think matter as much as the intent, understanding what you want.
Okay, okay. Um, it is seven o'clock, so I need to make it a motion to continue the meeting past seven. Do I have a motion? Have a second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay. Um, we can continue. Okay. So, um, anything else on Veterans before we move on? I want to make sure everybody and I, are there any comments online, I think?
I don't think so.
Okay.
No, I guess the only question I want to make about, you know, the reason why those, those parks kind of serve as a as a, that's where the floodwaters go now anyway. So, uh, I think having them as parks accomplishes that, accomplishes that goal anyway. Not sure what other kind of improvements.
Well, I think that would be
Besides laying down the banks like we've done.
I think that writing that in or, or making a mention, I mean, again, like that's, it's beyond, I, I think that between Ian and Scotty, I mean, they're, they're so in my opinion, like if they say like, yeah, this might be helpful, then I think we should
Sure.
potentially have that in there, because it's, it is beyond.
Saying that's shouldn't they, they already
Already thought about it. Okay. Um, okay, let's move on to Grabhorn. Actually, um, for, for Darcy, for tonight, should we go over Grabhorn since we haven't really, we, we have, this could take a long time. We haven't officially deliberated on how we want Grabhorn to look yet.
Um, well, you know, it, it is up to you. It is, it's your time. The, you know, the big idea with Grabhorn really is that, that this is, uh, you know, a space that's unprogrammed, it's undeveloped. We, we do know that there's a, a need in the community for more youth activities and things for youths to do. Um, so ball fields come up as, as something that, um, you know, people would like. Um, obviously that is not without controversy on this particular spot. So what you're seeing in the recommendations are incorporate sports fields or courts, again, not with much specificity, but that idea that this is an active area and that it ties into the activities and the, the, the type of energy and, and variety that Veterans has. Um, and that there's some, you know, there's some synergy there, right? There's some um, opportunity to expand and complement what you already have going on in Veterans. So that, that's kind of the big idea and, you know, having some conversation about whether or not that's, uh, you know, that's a good idea. Uh, but the first two, you know, bullets really are pretty active. Um, you know, we also talked tonight about this being an area that could accommodate the, the, um, uh, disc golf. I, I don't know how that really accomplishes your youth sports per se, not that youths don't play, you know, disc golf, but it's a little bit more of a specialized activity. And then of course, opening up the, you know, access to the creek, um, the walking, the shade, the, the more passive recreation, certainly there's, there's an opportunity for that at Grabhorn as well. And as well as to continue that, that kind of trail system and that I, um, you know, that uh, availability of, of having that nature experience south to Veterans and through Concomly, right? The bridge.
Um, so Isaac, go ahead.
So also, um, just for consideration too, if you look in the narrative, under future vision, it says the Grabhorn property is undergoing a separate master planning effort. I think we are aware that you, still a conversation around this part.
Okay.
Specifics.
Yeah, for sure.
Um, I think that the idea is to try to see and capture a general feel for that park, so we can include something in here.
Okay.
Prioritization exercises at the ATM. That being said, that doesn't mean the secondary parallel path stops. It's just, is this broad enough to capture where that park will end up? We can go with this for now. Come back some other time, that's in two weeks, whether that's in a couple of months, whatever, to consider, will it still fit into that bucket?
Okay.
I was just gonna say, I thought all of the, I thought you hit all the right points. Disc golf, I, I don't know enough to say it should or should, should not be included. Um, I'm, I'm really
I, I think it would be with disc golf, it'd be either or. We either have the sports fields or we'd have the disc golf.
Well, then I take it out because, because, um, our girls, Scappus don't have a public field for softball. Don't have any public soccer fields and I think it's to tell you honest truth, that we bought the property from the Grabhorns. That's what we told them we were gonna do with the field. So city really kind of said that's what they're gonna do with it.
Terry, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm on, on board with another girls field or you, boys, girls field, because the number of kids that are playing Little League baseball right now, we've got eight teams just here in Scappus. We're bringing St. Helens teams in to play. Alaska nine, Rainier, uh, they're two fields. It could really use another field. A test on the pickleball, we could always get the pickleball knits and go to St. Helens and do a trial. Cause they don't have, they don't provide knits in St. Helens for their new courts. So you have to bring with your own knits. And if you brought a large group of people down there on a weekly basis, houses are fairly close to that and that might be a good test, see who would complain or not complain. Not saying that Grabhorn wouldn't be a really nice place to have pickleball. But I don't want to get in a situation where you set it all up, spend $200,000 and have people complain.
Well, I think that we could just ultimately, like say right now that we do want this to just be sports fields and then we could hold, put a pin in that for now. And then, um, we can, there, there are some, some limitations on the site for these fields. So at some point in time, I, I would like to have a formal session where we discuss Grabhorn again and bring Dave Sukka in here where he can go through all of these diagrams and what everything means and break it down for us so that we can, we can spend some time on it. But are we all in agreement that we do want to see sports fields there and we can, um, cut out the disc golf option?
I'd like to add one more thing.
Yes.
Disc golf is incredibly adaptable. It works in the strangest places. I mean, that's the great thing about it, like power lines, uh, like uh, like feet, like hillsides, whatever. This would be the most boring disc golf court. This would be the most boring disc golf course in the world. So I mean.
I was wondering about that.
Yeah, so it doesn't work for disc golf at all. So when we think about, you know, areas that we do have that doesn't work very well, that's when you start going, how could this be a creative pickleball thing where you have to, you know?
Disc golf.
Disc golf, sorry. Throw it up, you know, 100 feet up a hillside or something. Well, yeah, maybe. Secondarily, so with regards to, we did have some feedback on this. Should we not say anything or?
I don't want to spend too much time on it.
Just the one thing that I remember that it was a big deal that, you know, with the soccer field so close to the road, you know, the balls would be going in like the entire time. And it was immediately suggested that whatever parking we have be closer to Smith Road and then push the fields over.
Yeah, I think, I think most people were more favorable of option one with the parking lot on the other side.
Oh, yeah.
The other side, is that the west side or?
Yeah, parking lot on.
Yeah.
EJ Smith, yeah.
Yeah, and then the secondarily was, again, we did a lot of feedback on this is that fields we use so much that to have a few, to have the multi-use field on option three just probably is not worth our time.
Yeah.
We really need to have them separate.
I, I do still, I would still like to have Dave in here so that we can really have it all unpacked. But I, I would agree. I think most folks were going for option one when this first came out.
Isaac. I think we should sidebar this until we're done with Darcy.
Yes.
Because if we're going to have a separate conversation, we can discuss when and how that happens. But for our purposes, you know, we, we're trying to get through this list tonight. And then after, after we're done, I think it's important to come back. So I think we should set down the agenda.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, let's move on to Chief Concomode.
And I heard horseshoes. I wrote down horseshoes.
A volleyball court down in the core area. All you got to do is put a couple of holes in some sand.
Talk it louder.
I think putting a volleyball court down by the horse, in that lower floodplain area with, there's about three or four acres there. And it doesn't matter for floods or not, and it would get a lot of use.
Well, and I, I think that second bullet enhanced play opportunities. I think our designer was looking towards more of that photograph of the child's playing on the logs, like playing on a play structure that, I think that's what she was thinking of, not, not increased variety of, of things to do like horseshoes and volleyball. So we might want to add a, you know, add a bullet. Again, I think she's looking at this park as, as, you know, going forward, having, having a more diverse opportunity for younger children. But horseshoes and volleyball, of course, would be kind of hitting more of the, more of a different demographic. So I like that, I like that addition.
Could you pull up that map again of that park? Now. The area I'm talking about is, is down by the, well, I guess you got part of it down by the creek there.
Yeah.
You know, the city owns all the way over to the creek, that whole area in there. That's about four or five acres and it's really fairly unused. The kids go there to go swimming, but it's, it's just a little hidden asset that a little bit of imagination could be a real positive.
Okay, so do, would we like to add volleyball and horseshoes? What is everyone's thoughts? Yes, okay, all right, let's add that in as a bullet point. And then, so when, in this bullet that says enhanced play opportunities, increase variety. So you're saying that she was meaning more like in addition to the playground structure that's already there, adding a different natural play?
I believe so.
Um, what are? I love the idea of incorporating natural play everywhere. Go ahead.
Uh, I think we need to put those words in there.
Okay.
Natural play.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I think we have nature, nature play elsewhere as a, so I don't know what the, the, the term of the, the actual term is, but I'm sure she does.
Yeah, nature and is open-ended play. I think is that I've seen that terminology throughout in the, elsewhere in this document.
Yep, love it.
Okay. Um, and I love the idea of the oak and apple trees having more signage for that. Go ahead, Ian.
Playing off of that oak and apple trees, I, I think this would be a really good spot for a community garden. Or community orchard type thing where.
I, I was thinking the exact same thing because that was suggested in Miller Park and I did not think that would be appropriate in Miller Park. I thought it would be more appropriate for Concomode.
Yeah, I think. Obviously, we're not designing it, but there's that area that was talked about to the west of the semicircle. Part of that is still up at a higher level grade that's not in the floodplain. Easily be used. When you talk about community garden, there's infrastructure that comes with it. You need access to be able to back a truck in to drop bark, to pick up feeds and other things. And this has direct access off of that access drive. Would that, Miller Park just would not have ease of adaption for a community park.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that would be good idea. Okay.
Do you guys know that oak tree is 300 years old?
I think eventually there's going to be a sign that says that, right? That's the hope. I don't think it's there yet. Um, okay, anything else we'd like to add to Chief Concomode?
Well, Mike, I know the original Concomode plan had a bridge in it actually. And so could you tell us real quickly, what was the barriers to that happening?
Real simple, money. We paid $350,000 for Concomode and used purchase. Well, the Burnett's owned it and we used that purchases our, our match for the grant that built the pavilion, the restroom, walkways and the parking area. And that was all the money we had. You know, that park also needs a few more picnic tables. That pavilion's really a, it's a real jewel. Needs more picnic tables.
Is there, how much was the bridge?
Well. Well, I built two of them in my, in my time and they're, they're probably $300,000 plus. 300,000, I think is a fair number. I built one in Venonia. Over Rock Creek, I don't know if you ever have seen that one. It's pretty cool. And then another one in, they're, they're not cheap.
I just went away up the last couple of years too.
Probably 600.
Do we want to make this our kind of dream list or do we want to take that? Because I, I would like to eventually see a bridge there.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Okay, all right. I would really like to keep it in there.
If we're dreaming, could you go back to the map one more time? I'll show you something else, a little jewel there about that park that could really help with parking. If you go towards First Street. There, that's Sealy Road, that's Sealy Road right there. And that, that part of that's a public road. And we always thought that we wanted to connect that to First Street, which one would offer access to the people that were parking downtown. And so that, you know, maybe leading the, a parkway along there might be an aspiration.
Is that within the scope of what we're?
And the way that's going to get built is there's going to be apartments that are going to go in and that, you know, at some point in time, that whole area is going to develop into multi. Parking in the city is going to require that as part of the development. One of the constraints is that one of the property owners would have to tear down their house or move their house because there's not enough right of way for it. But that, that is the goal. So if you look at. EM Watts, not EM Watts, but JP West, there's no, there's no sidewalks. And so this would be a benefit for that as well.
Okay, we can potentially, we can, we can add that in.
It's probably in your transportation system plan.
Okay.
If it's not, it probably should be.
I don't know if it is.
I'm not, I'm not 100% positive. I do know we're going to be looking at the TSP again at some fairly quick, fairly soon in the scheme. Can definitely make, put a, put a recommendation out.
All right, um, let's move on to Miller Park. As you already mentioned, I think we talked about the covered basketball courts.
Add, add that to the first bullet.
Um, and then that it's not necessarily a great place for a meadow or a planting meadow, I think is what it, a native meadow, no wait, sorry, neighborhood orchard. I would say that Chief Concomode seems like a better place for that. What do we have thoughts on Miller Park?
That's probably the one I go to the most because that's right next to my house, so. But.
Yeah.
I have lots of thoughts, but I don't want to overrun it.
I would say some form of outdoor covered space.
Yes.
That be the basketball courts or another picnic area?
That picnic area gets used all the time.
Haven't spent a lot of time at Miller Park, but size of this seemed to me like it might be possible for another dog park. On that out there and let everybody.
Yeah, we've.
Watch on that one for a second.
We have talked about that in the past so that we can have an east side dog park. The challenge is, is that they do pick up soccer games on that backfield right now. So unless we had more fields elsewhere, we would be taking over for like the, the youth soccer. Yeah. Otherwise, yes, we have talked about that space. Go ahead.
So if, if there were soccer fields elsewhere, the opportunity for soccer elsewhere, then is there anything that would be, is there any reason not to have a dog park?
I.
There?
Um, I mean, I think it could work. I mean, it's, it's, it runs into the same issue as the, as a veterans' dog park is that it's really just not big enough. Like it's, it's not really enough space for the current dog users. I mean, they might, they might like it. But it, it seems like the, especially in the winter time, like they just get, it just gets muddy. It's too small and so they just move out and they just use open space. And so right now people just take their dogs there right now and just throw balls for their dog. It's just, they're just, just not fenced in. Go ahead.
It's informal.
Yeah. Ian?
Being that it's close to Crown Z, this might be a good spot to put that pump track. Right where the soccer field is, but.
Yeah.
We're dreaming over here.
But what though?
The pump track, the bike, bike skills.
Pump track, those can go in very small, small spaces. They're just kind of like a ribbon.
Hey, I feel like this park is almost too small for it. Like it's, it's so used for like birthday parties and people play frisbee and take their dogs there to, you know, throw balls and they have pickup games. Like I just, I don't, I think that taking up that space with a pump track might, I actually make it less usable.
Certainly would.
Yeah.
Decrease the flexibility.
Yes. I guess that using those terms, it's a highly flexible space that's used in many different ways right now that, that people seem to enjoy.
I, I like the idea of the hammock garden.
I do too. That was, I've never seen that before. Yeah. Darcy, can you explain the hammock garden more?
No. But I can, well, actually there's a picture of it.
There is. Do, so people just, so there's just like some eye hooks in the trees and people just come and put their hammocks up? Yeah. Is that what's happening? What's happening?
I think so. I think that that's what's happening. I could, I could ask our designer if she has more examples or an explanation, like a, a narrative. I can ask her about that.
Is that downtown Portland?
Hey now. Hey now.
No, I think there are kind of a supportive amenity to say like picnics or birthday parties or outdoor movies or concert events or anything like that where people come. Fairly extended period of time where some, another way of enjoying your. Those set alone, you're not going to go there, bring your hammock and sit there for two hours. How can I do that? But if it was integrated in with some other like program element, I think.
That kind of caters to the senior citizens that go to the party and they get.
Right, we need nap.
Like it's multi-generational space for sure.
Okay, and I, I didn't necessarily love the big, long table for that space. All right, what did everybody else think? No? Okay. Yeah, I would rather.
Community table?
Yeah, I would almost rather see another like picnic, like covered picnic area than like a big, long, open table. Where there's multiple.
We, and we have a nice, a nice photo of that, but I don't think we have that in text about a covered.
Picnic area. Another, I think another covered gazebo would, would be really nice.
Just my two sounds. I, I actually think a big table like this would be kind of cool. You could, could double it up as like a outdoor shuffleboard table or something. But being that this park is used a lot for birthday parties and other things where there's larger groups that come, something like that might be worthwhile thing to leave in here as a, hey, let's think about it.
I'm okay with the big, the big, long table. I guess I would just love to see it covered. Carrie?
Is there one basketball hoop or is there one at each end of the?
There's two.
There's two.
At each end.
Nice to have that covered.
Yeah, that's on the list.
So, yeah, do you think that, we also have to add an additional court to the site? And Carrie, you've talked about the site, you know, starting to feel small with the addition of other facilities. But I think this is the only full-size court on park property. So the idea of adding an additional. Reaction to that.
Yeah, that might be too much, like adding an additional covered shelter.
Well, adding additional covered, I'm sorry, adding an additional basketball court, just period.
Covered or uncovered. No, not an additional, I'm sorry, not additional basketball court, an additional covered shelter.
Yeah, I got that.
Okay, yes, not, but not an additional basketball court.
Okay, so in the first bullet there, consider adding an additional court to the site.
No, I, I don't think that would fit very well. No. Sorry, I missed that.
I don't know that we have another, well, we'll keep going, but I, I don't know that we have another space to add another court, basketball court. But I could be wrong. But keep that in mind because that, again, that's something that has been brought up as a, you know, as a desire, but I'm not sure that we have a place for it.
As, are you saying, wait, I, I think we're, I think we're, I think there's a miscommunication here. Are you saying you're, I think you, another, another basketball court, another pickleball court?
Full size, full-size basketball court.
We do not want another one in the site.
Got that, but I think it's something that the community has not asked for, but there's, there's like an opportunity to provide, it's been mentioned, let's put it that way.
Right.
To have that kind of facility, we could use another one. But I don't know that in this document, we have another space identified for a new full-size. So just, I guess, keep that in the back of your mind because I think it's, it's going to be. Yeah, it's one of the things maybe just to solve for that we haven't yet. Similar with, with disc golf, right? So we, we said no kind of at Grabhorn, we've said no at veterans. I don't think we've said yes to pickleball anywhere yet.
I thought we said yes to pickleball veterans. Yes, we want pickleball.
I'm so sorry, yes, not pickleball, uh, disc, disc golf.
We have not yet.
Okay. Apologies, yeah, I meant this. Okay.
Um, okay. So what are we, what are our thoughts about the long table? Isaac?
So one of the things was brought up at EDC today was that we are kind of seeing an uptick in community events. We see some little events, we see one very large event. We're finding that that large event's hard to sustain and something like a covered area with a long table be a place for community events. So I've seen them in other communities, be community breakfasts or lion's dinner or it's a place for people that can, they can rent it out in a way to generate revenue, to help do maintenance. It, it can bring these smaller events in because there's a place to set up and do things. I, from one hat I'm wearing today, and Paul brought this up, is maybe our community would be better served by more small events. That would be a really good place to do certain types of events if there's a covered area with a table something we don't currently have.
I think, I would be, so I, I do go back on my statement. I would be more okay with this long table if it were covered.
So how long a table are we talking about?
That's a good question. I don't know. I mean, it, it looks, it looks long. That's all, I'm just going off of the picture.
I'm just thinking Concomode has that huge play and it's covered. You get a long table there, maybe. I'm just thinking, come calmly, he has that huge play and it's covered. You get a long table there, maybe.
Sounds like you like the idea of the long table generally, maybe not here, but somewhere if it is.
Yes, that's the bulk of it.
I, I would, I mean, I would just say if you want it to be used during all times of the year, you're going to cover it.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's ultimately it. So some of this stuff, I'm kind of like, ah, like it's, it's, it looks great if we're in LA. But since we're here, like we, I think we need to be thinking about.
Bring it. Well, you know, we could keep that idea of consider, uh, providing a long table or long tables. You know, I think the idea there is that the community aspect, the communal aspect that that, that type of table brings. It's a little bit different than small picnic tables that are a little bit more isolated. You could have your own little, you know, group without being communal. So, uh, you know, I think keeping the, you know, the idea that you want a covered space for small community events such as blah de blah, um, you know, and, and really also these neighborhood kind of ideas. And then, then maybe consider providing a long table. Maybe that's the way to like not lose that idea, but also not, you know, not necessarily fully embrace it either.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Um, let's go.
I can rework that.
Um, how about that? Do we, do we say no on the hammock garden? Do we want to just take that out or are we considering the idea?
Wait a second, I'm a senior, I need to.
Mike wants his hammock.
I don't.
Okay. Um, all right, well, let's, we can just move on from there. Um, create walking loops for, and resting areas for strolling, scooting and balance biking. Sound good? Um, more seating, more shade, use the open field as informal space for picnicking, pickup games and neighborhood gatherings. Um, and I really like the connection to the airplanes as well for that. I think that's a nice, um, you do see the airplanes fly overhead, um, the entire time you're at the park. So that is nice. Um, always a fan of additional signage and then additional parking. Anything else we'd like to add to Miller Park? Okay, let's move on.
Okay, Creek View, there.
Excuse me, Cara?
Yes, sorry, Jeanette.
I'm, no, I just had my, you can't see my hand, but, um, I have to step away, but if you, um, want to touch base with me, if you want me to, to, uh, cover something with the council, please let me, you know, we can touch base.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you guys.
And a note for anybody, not for you, Jeanette, just for whoever, if there's anybody left online, um, we're, we have a slide up on the screen so we can't see.
Okay.
On the board.
All right, thanks.
Feel free to chip in and interrupt.
Yes. Okay, Creek View. Um, and one thing that I wanted to mention was that when we just had our last snow, um, that is a very popular sledding hill. So.
Oh, neat.
I, uh, I just thinking about, um, I would hate to take that, I, I want to consider anything that we are thinking of putting in this park. I want to consider that, that is used, um, whenever it snows by many children and people go to that park even from outside of that community to sled there. So it's a great hill.
I think we should add that to the site character, uh, background. Okay.
Used to live right on it. And so that's, yeah, we definitely slid it on that. In the summertime, a picnic table or two would be at it floods every, you know, winter or so. You won't want something in there not big enough for disc golf, but the sledding and just, uh, kids going out, I mean, they would throw their balls to their dogs for the neighborhood dogs, but picnic tables are, would be nice.
Yeah.
Not much access to the creek, a lot of blackberry bushes and stuff.
Yeah. Um. Any thoughts on Creek View or anything that we'd want to add to what they have?
I, I think I would just say that I think this park will hold more value if or when there was ever a South Scappoose Creek Trail along it as a pull-off picnic spot or slight hangout spot. Probably need a bridge, but, um, uh, I think that's something to plan for.
Interesting is the city actually owns property across the creek from that and, and all the way to the bridge, so.
Question. In relationship to this park and the senior center, would a trail connect to those two areas at all? Assuming the senior center is not going to be there in the future at some point. I know.
I'm not sure.
Other, they're spending a hundred thousands of dollars, uh, trying to renovate it right now and.
Are they?
And they have a, a pretty good footprint there.
It's like 45 acres, isn't it?
Well, no, they have about, and I think they have two acres there, but the rest of that piece all the way to Old Portland Roads, Old Portland Road is owned by a game, a guy named Steve Biddy. He was about 85 and he's.
I thought that was a bigger.
It's, it's all zoned, um, pre-residential and he's had some visions of high intensity residential in there.
Okay. So in terms of the creek and the trail and all that, the planning that was done around that is very high level. Um, it's not down to the granular about where is this weaving in and out, who's getting connected. It was more about like, but it was more like a feasibility study. What's, what's the feasibility? What might the cost look like? Where might it generally go so that future people had an idea to say, okay, so this is what these folks. Something like that. You know, it might, it might be as simple as developing the sidewalks and having, having some signage to connect. But at this point, it's, it's just not developed enough as a trail itself to understand where those kinds of connections are made.
Well, you'd have to have a bridge.
Yeah. And, and just to make a point too, future generations are going to look at what we're talking about on the record. You know, when they go to do that, they're going to look at our minutes from this. They're going to look at what did they talk about, just like we did, look back at it, show you say what happened. They'll, they'll pick up these notes.
All right, anything to add to Creek View? Uh, move on. Are we going to be going through the proposed neighborhood parks tonight?
Uh, I would suggest not, um, in that they are, I think these are going to be more opportunistic and really, um, you know, a, a conversation with future development and future developers. Um, that said, uh, again, depending on, on council's, um, you know, intent on, on still looking at, uh, uh, the 10-minute kind of walk area. Um, I understand that that's not articulated, uh, necessarily in the, the goals, council goals. Um, you know, if it were a very strong desire, then you would be looking at these areas, uh, and, and seriously looking for acquisition opportunities. Um, I think where, where things are kind of headed with these, these areas is more again, like opportunistic, have the conversation. You know, try to, um, you know, provide for open space, you know, pocket parks, um, when those opportunities arise through, through, you know, through future development and growth in those areas. Um, there, the bullets read very similar. Um, acquire or obtain an easement. Um, they're not super differentiated, uh, based on their, um, location. Um, so definitely if you have, um, uh, if you have suggestions or, uh, you have opinions about the, the viability or the need for parks in, in those particular areas, I think that we'd like to hear that. Um, but these are, these are high priority only and such that, um, they, they're not well-served now, um, from an access standpoint. Um, and those are some areas for growth, uh, where you're going to see more residents. So that's all I, I will say about that.
Okay.
We want to add anything?
Oh, there's one on the future recommendations I'd like to discuss real quick, just the fire district site.
Okay. Oh, um, let's actually go through, um, the, because we are going to go through Crown, I think Linear Park Trail real fast and then we will get to that.
Good.
Um, so let's go to the Linear Park Trail. And, um, so Crown Z. Is there anything? I mean, I think these are all things that we have talked about over time. I don't think there's anything on this list that is out of anything we've discussed. Um, so do we want to add anything to Crown Z?
So it says, uh, establish a better pedestrian connection to the west. You know, because years back, the trail was removed from 30 to West Lane Road. I mean, from a visitor's standpoint, point of view, I mean, you're, you don't even know, the trail goes through Scappoose.
Do not.
And we're missing out on a huge tourist opportunity here. Um, and then secondarily, um, if you even try to navigate that area, it's quite difficult. Um, you know, so is there a plan or has there ever been talks about establishing a better pedestrian connection there?
We have talked a lot.
We have, we have talked.
Yeah.
Ad nauseam about it. I mean, we talked about, you know, talking about the, the area where they've been digging out gravel and accessing a trail that way. And so it's just, uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's tough and I, and I hate that. I hate Highway 30. I hate how it's set up. It's just awful.
I, yeah, at this point in time, I don't know that we could get anywhere by discussing it tonight. We just have to just say, let's put it in there.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
I would like to see some covered areas along the trail, um, and then access to drinking water along the trail as well.
Okay.
Talk about deep points and waysides, add in. Water bottle.
And a, and a covered shelter as well. That would be nice. Yeah, okay. Yeah, let's add a covered, some sort of covered shelter, small one. Yes, you hear it?
Electric bicycle charging stations. Good thing, um, electric bikes are going big places in the trail. We need some. We've been talking about it with other areas around the county.
Okay.
I don't know if the perfect product's developed yet, but, uh, a lot of opportunity there.
This is the place to put it in there.
Somewhere in.
Okay.
Area and then another 10 or 20 mi, 10, every 10 miles or so.
Yeah, okay.
And I know that, I know that the city is planning on putting in, um, outlets with the new lights that they're installing or electric bikes specifically.
Okay.
So if there are lighting needs along the trail, that would be a really opportunistic way to address it.
Great. Um, all right, are we ready to move on to a proposed Scappoose Creek Trail?
Can I just go back one little step?
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, and this is probably more in Casey's Bailey Wick than it is our Bailey Wick, but it benefits the city tremendously. That's a trailhead for the Crown Z Trail going towards Chapman in Vernonia. Um, right now, here at the highway, there's that little spot there. Right across next to the fire station is a lot that is.
Yes, that, that is the last piece of property in this packet.
Okay, and yes, I'd love to chime in about that. We may have a disagreement on whose Bailey Wick it should be in, but, uh, it's a needed development, I think, or would be fantastic.
Well, we know where the deep pockets are.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Scappoose Creek Trail. Um. Do we, so this is, at this point in time, um, this looks, this looks great, but it's still just proposed, correct? Okay.
Um. Probably something that develops over time as new development happens. A lot of properties along the creek are not developable, be developable. Those big things go in like the Buxton Development. So he isn't usable and they, part of the agreement is that they put in a trail.
Okay.
System. It's one of those things that will just kind of develop incremental. Probably.
Okay, and this is pretty consistent with, with what we would like to see it, or what we in general want to see at our trails, bike racks, um, viewing signage. Is there anything we'd like to add to this? I like the intersection with Crown Z as well. Okay, let's move on to Chapman Landing.
Talked a little bit about this last time. I think there was some agreement, uh, that, uh, a non-motorized boat ramp or kayak launch would be appropriate here. I think bike lockers also, I think they had some, some favorable head nods and comments. That's what I recall.
Yeah, I think, I think everything on this list is stuff that we have talked about. Um, anybody else like to add or remove an item or discuss? Okay, are we ready to move on?
Yeah, handicapped fishing here.
People are fishing there now, so having some kind of an area where they can fish safely would be good.
An actual platform? Okay, yeah, we could add in like a fishing platform. I think that would.
Isaac, do you remember that conversation about that or am I recalling maybe a stakeholder, uh, in, uh, conversation about fishing platforms?
I think we're, I think there might have been a stakeholder conversation about it. Uh, I do know there's been a conversation about the actual concrete platform that.
Right, that's what I was, yeah.
Um, but that again, it's more like design.
Yeah.
I don't recall a specific issue from the city with that.
Okay.
So no, there's veterans money and for accessible fishing piers.
Oh, okay.
A lot. Like there's opportunity there for.
Oh, fantastic. Okay, that's good to know.
Okay.
Ian?
Um.
Oh, sorry, Darcy, we've got a comment here.
I'm adding that, um, I'm adding that and I'll, I'll see if I can find that comment. I thought there was some, uh, some issue there, uh, perhaps with safety, uh, but.
Yes, that was for the platform that's already there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ian and then Terry?
Uh, I just have a general question for the group. Um, when we talk about enhance access to the water, um, how much access do we want?
Well, right now, so the access is, the main access point is like right around like the giant pipe that comes out of the ground. And then there's kind of like a muddy beach. Um.
The pipe she's referring to is the, technically there's a term for it that makes it sound bad, but really what it is, is the treated water outlet into canal right there. So current access which is there. It's treated water. It's not like going to hurt anybody, but it is the water from the treatment.
Yeah.
So that's kind of the context around that.
Yeah. Some fun signage around it. Um, well, so there's pictures of kayaks with a hardened edge here, almost a man-made beach. Um, and there's the condition that we have now where it's a muddy mess.
Yes.
If you want to get in and swim. Access to the water in that context versus, you know, adding a ramp and a dock or something where you, uh, you can launch your watercraft. There's different levels of access to the water and maybe it's not something we need to really define here, but just wanted to put that out there. If we really didn't want people actually like being on swim trunks and swimming. Maybe there's a different way to, uh, phrase that.
I mean, I don't necessarily know that we don't ask. I mean, is there concerns with swimming there?
I, I don't, I don't think so, not from that perspective, but you know, with a big pipe like that and water coming out at high volumes constantly and the other site concerns. Think that that's an important point. We haven't really looked at the site, right? We know it's very difficult to develop and so.
Yeah.
That aspect, that kind of safety aspect, um, health, safety stuff hasn't been examined. So I think that as question goes forward around this particular borders about development, that will become.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's a, it is a wonderful spot for that particular, that first picture there that has the kayaks and this hardened sort of step-down terrace to the water. As far as any of our available properties we've looked at today that are next to water, this is the spot to do. It's just a decision to go forward, do that, or you want to rehabilitate it back to its natural state. I don't know. I, I think it's a good spot to actually get down to the water and as long as it's safe and clean, which if it's from the wastewater plant, obviously been treated as highly as any water you're ever going to drink, uh, it's a good spot to do it.
Um, oh, Terry was first.
I.
Okay.
Must have been way.
Hey, Jay. Okay, all right.
I'm going to, I'm going to add the word safe and how, enhance safe access to the water. Maybe that will be a reminder, right?
It's, yeah.
Guess the one thing I, I'm not sure is on the list that I, I just wanted to question was, big concrete pad and people, you know, it's a little bit of a safety hazard.
Yes.
And, um, spoke with Michael Curry about that and I think you all know who Michael Curry is. Signs puppets and he has a big operation out on the dike and he felt like if we could put some rails around that and put a new deck on it and a walkway, it'd be a fabulous place to view birds and kind of stuff. And, and it wouldn't be that expensive or that difficult and, and, um, because a lot of that area is really difficult to access and a lot of it has that, that old Chapman Landing piling.
Yeah.
Uh, so it, it is limited, but it, at the end of the day, is the only waterfront property Scappoose will probably ever have.
Yeah, and we do have, we have the word viewing, viewpoints.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're capturing some of that in the, in the bullets. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So I think that, that if we don't have to like necessarily say that's what that site needs to be, but if we have viewpoints in there, we can. Back to that. Okay, anything else before we move on? All right, let's move on to Commerce Drive or Cat Head.
Um, yeah, this, this is where we come down to is can we, can we do? Yeah, this, this is where we come down to is can we, can we do an off-leash area for dogs? Is this a place for a more interesting disc golf course? It's 14 acres, but a lot of that's wet, I understand.
Yeah. Paul, what do you think for disc golf? I think you're our resident expert.
Do have a course in my house. The only time I've been to a Cat Head, I didn't bring my scuba gear. So I could not get close to it.
Yeah.
And I will say, we have not assessed this site for it's part of what's happened with development, but we haven't actually looked at those maps to see how far those extended. As we all are aware, that affects
Yeah, and I know when Jim Lycan went to look at it and he said it was not appropriate for a dog park, that was like July. So if in July, it was still not appropriate for a dog park, then I, we're not getting anything better. So I would say we have, we totally gotta cross that off and then probably disc golf as well, because it is gonna be muddy. So I, maybe this just needs to be our wildlife viewing, nature area.
I agree.
Okay, all right, so yeah, let's get rid of the off-leash dog area and the disc golf area here. And I don't know about a shelter. I mean, if we can find one, it would be nice. I mean, I wouldn't want to take that out. Yeah, go ahead, JJ.
So one thing that might be a good consideration is to do a duck blind. So on Sovis Island at the Wapato Trail, which is a three mile trail around a big pond, there are a couple, well, A, the Audubon Society did a great job having pictures of birds and identifying what they are and what year, what time they're out in the, out in the wild, but having that duck line was really great to, to look at the ducks and everything else.
This would be something that maybe we could write in here that we would like to partner with the Audubon Society. This would be a beautiful area to, to do work with them for that.
They, they do have, over in North Portland, like Columbia where it whips around, where St. John's where it was back around and there is a park over there and they have covered blind areas you can view the wildlife and stuff. So it takes care of both. You got a covered area and
Oh, okay.
So it, they're, it's pretty nice. I can't think of the name of the park.
Smith and Bybee.
Smith and Bybee?
Yeah, Smith and Bybee, yeah, so.
Okay.
That's a, that's a good example.
Okay, yeah.
You can use it here around too, thinking about their driveway in the animals come in.
Things like that would be really nice. Ian?
There's actually also a dirt bike as well.
Okay.
Thanks, thanks for sharing that with us. I'm kind of afraid to go to that part of Portland.
What about rough?
Ian, go ahead.
I think this is an awesome nature park.
Yes.
For the town, got really good access, biking access. Parking might be an issue, vehicle parking, but cross that bow when we come to it. Love the idea of the trails and boardwalks sort of meandering through the natural features. Would maybe add some some wordage maybe that has to do with or reestablishing native habitat. If we're going to encourage wildlife viewing. And then, I don't know, I, I haven't walked a site, so I'm simply looking at this map, but there's a little bit of space. What I assume is to the east side, it looks like it might be a little out of the water that might work for a pump track. Trying to find a spot for
I, I think it would be really popular. Hmm, interesting.
To me, it's not an ideal spot. It's a little farther away from town. And I think you want a pump track closer to town, but might be, it's right off the trail, so it's not like it's hard to get to with a bike.
Yeah, it's right off the trail.
Ryan, you are a, you are our pump track expert. Has, is there a park that you would be like, this is exactly where?
You can pretty much kind of put them anywhere. You can have big ones, small ones. It's mainly theirs. It's still wet there in July. That could be an issue there and you can't, it's a wetland area, you can't put any soil in there at all. You're, you're pretty much stuck.
Yeah.
That's when, that's when downfall this, this area with that. I was at that too, so.
We're actually looking at something like that. The Chapman area, some opportunity to do, whether it's a pump track or some kind of EMX thing, but I don't, not sure if it's the same on the Scappoose side, but I'm thinking that right away on the trail is at least 40 feet. Somebody know that off the top of their head, Mike?
It varies from 50 to 100 feet.
So, um, so the smallest areas and, yeah, at 40, 50, but if you have 50 to 100 foot right away on that trail, there could be pump track opportunities all over the place, right alongside of the CZ trail. So evaluating which areas are wider or narrower, even at 50 feet, if you have a, you know, 12-foot wide trail, 20 to 20, there could be space on each side of it to do some new cycling.
Such a good idea, isn't it?
There is quite a bit of that along the county side of the trail and I'm pretty sure it's the same on the Scappoose side. So that might be your best pump track spot.
We should add that into the
Just need to evaluate and sorry, yeah, I should have
Onto the CZ trail portion?
On the CZ trail is identify potential pump track opportunities adjacent.
Yeah, and then everybody's already on their bikes, they can
Already on a bike.
Oh, that's a great idea.
Do that in Bentonville, Arkansas, they have, have road bike, right next to is off-road mountain bike trails there. They build them purposely like that, so.
So I, I would prefer to, yeah, that is, that's a great idea. So I would, knowing that, I would prefer to kind of leave Cat Head as a nature space. Thoughts? And, okay, all right. We're moving on to Vista.
So before we do that, just want to double check. So I don't think that we have a place for an additional dog park necessarily. Unless you kind of include the Miller Park flexible area, but not a formal established fenced area. And we don't have disc golf.
Okay.
I, I think that that's, I just wanted to mention that and I don't, again, I don't know that disc golf is rising to the top. I don't, I don't think that that's an activity that really is a teen, typically a teen sport thing, but it is something that you don't have that people enjoy.
But what about Vista for golf? Would there be an appropriate space there?
Possibly.
I would be, I like that idea of having like a really fun, kind of challenging course here. That would draw people in. I mean, I know my, my husband and kids play disc golf and they travel all over the place to go do it.
Now, I remember it being as pretty, pretty treed, right? So, I mean, forested, second growth certainly, but
I would say many courses are.
The, you can make a much shorter course in, in trees because it is so much more challenging.
Yeah.
Interesting.
So that's, that's one idea. Another idea, I mean, we could just put like a couple holes, like practice holes somewhere. That's at least gonna, you know, if we were interested, that's just another option. Not a great option, but.
Could we, I mean, I'm not, I'm not against it. I think people would still go out and use it. But would, what about like running from, I think when they were looking at disc golf, they were probably looking at the bottom portion of veterans?
Maybe like something like, like simple, like, like a couple, like practice kind of three holes type thing. Yeah.
And then what about having some going into grab horn potentially?
That could work.
Okay, yeah. Can we put in potentially a disc golf course at Vista and then also some like mini courses going between veterans and grab horn?
Right, and so we had a mini course in veterans, but maybe we need to add to that as a, as a connection to or in association with potential at, uh,
That makes it long enough that it's actually interesting.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay, I like it. So we'll add that back to Vista. I'm sorry, add it back to
And I think potentially Vista, I mean, I, I, okay, yeah, and potentially into Vista if, if there's space.
Okay.
I just did a quick Google search. It looks like roughly one to two acres per hole as a standard disc golf. So, new count.
Benny, have you ever been on, I know you have, but has any of the rest of you been in Vista?
Little bit.
Where, where you can get to, right?
It's a, I mean, it's a beautiful, beautiful piece of property and there's 80 acres there and we went in and thinned it about four years ago. And we came, we did a lot of studying about what to do up there. The Achilles heel of that site is parking.
With disc golf, it, since it is just kind of like one, like, you know, a couple people go out, that might be inappropriate also for disc golf, because it's not like we're gonna need to head up there.
I was just, it's pretty sloped, right? And I was just always, there's a couple timber companies that own property that touch it, that are up at the top of JP West, that if, you know, you can lease or get access, then you're up on a flat area. And you can add a lot more trails and parking come in from that direction. The 2017 Parks Master Plan located the area north of Vista, which is the green area as a potential purchase. And that would bring it down to an actual, I don't know what road that is there, you know, as you go north.
Little valley.
Yeah. And then it would actually be someplace that you could park and you would actually walk up, you know, there's most Vista areas, you start at the bottom and you walk to the top. Yeah. That would, that would add a lot of opportunities. It was, it was, it was marked as a potential purchase.
Is that something that we can put into this that, to look, like have that, that we would like to potentially purchase additional surrounding property so that we can have?
I think generally
Okay.
I think if we're general about expanding access to that. Property acquisitions as possible would be
Then, then let's add that.
Right, um, right, and in that little description, possible uses explored over the years for this site include more formal trails for pedestrians, mountain bikes, horses. So the, the plan you have that is not adopted, but has been developed. I'm getting tired, so I, I can't remember the date, but it was, it was basically, it was your nature park. It was for trails. And so this, this really does switch up the, the vision for Vista to being more of a, an active recreation space with, with disc golf, the addition of disc golf. So that's just a comment or observation.
Yeah, I think originally we'd even talked about having a pump track up there and a bike skills park. So we had had big ideas for that space, because somebody did come and talk to us for a while and we, we mapped out like a whole plan of like mountain bikes and possibly electric bikes and how we would run the trails and why don't, I, I would, I would say that I would prefer to have maybe bike skills park and pump track. Maybe, I don't know, what do you guys think? Maybe I'm thinking more along CZ trail and have this as kind of more nature trails and like some disc golf. Yes, JJ?
Well, I was gonna also ask, I mean, I, there are no parks that have any camping opportunities for people. So would Vista be a possibility for primitive camping?
Uh, that is something that we had discussed in the past. I'm not sure. Isaac?
Technically, it could be allowable. Code ordinance that says we can allow parking. We're the city manager. I don't see why we couldn't explore it. This is, this is like in the sky.
Yes.
That's something I want to add to that list.
All right, go ahead.
I don't, that, that makes me nervous to have camping up there in a forest right next to the city, especially with this city's limited with, this forest, I don't think that's gonna dramatically and no good access to it. And I just, county's got some really nice parks that aren't that far away and I just that's trying to, trying to be, I don't know, I'm just not
Fair enough.
Kind of campgrounds, but they are their own animal and and homeless public space laws are changing and getting more and more complicated. So if there is camping, you need a onsite host.
Yes.
An absolute and it turns into a whole other animal to manage, so.
Yeah.
You think there's some value in leaving, county's got a lot of camping infrastructure, finding ways to support that. City sticking with they use stuff is, it was me, but
Probably ideal.
You guys are just, it's a whole other animal.
Yeah.
I, sorry, but I do have to go, so can I chime in real quick on the fire district?
Uh, yes.
Concept. I think it's great. I, I like the concept of fire district, but absolutely county, city, fire district opportunity to partner to make that happen. Connection, obviously across the highway to get to the Crown Zee Trail. But we have a, a big focus on that area on the other side of the highway to be included in this. We really need the city to partner with us on the design of that area across the highway. We want to do public art, showcase the rails to trails kind of concept. The new Crown Zee logo, improve safety from Highway 30. And all that stuff probably should be, I guess, considered the connection of that space. We want that space to be really a gateway that you drive by and see that this is a special thing. To help, you know, make it more obvious that you're in Scappoose. That's one of the gateways to the Crown Zee Trail. I'm very hopeful we can get Ian to partner with us a little with Ian's professional skillset to do some conceptuals. We're developing some scope parameters, but we need Scappoose engagement. Ian would be a huge valuable asset for that process and the rest of you. But I just see both sides of the highway there, county, city, fire district, partnership opportunities is, we all need to work together on that location because it's rail, but the city of Scappoose to showcase.
Perfect, so we can just put in that, any plans we will be partnering with stakeholders, county?
Both sides and both sides. It, referencing that other side is, it's an important location as well and there's some work that we need to do there to make it right and, and we don't have enough public art. One, there's a lot of money out there, public art that we're not tapping into and it's a great location.
I have an update on this. I just talked to Chris today and, and the fire station, they're gonna be using the property north of that. And they will pay for the road continuing northward. So we wouldn't have to worry about paying for the access to this property. So it makes it even more interesting for us. So these barriers seem to be falling down, so I think this should be pushed up the priority list.
Okay, yeah, I think.
There's a lot of money, anything connected to the trail, if we can make that connection, grant money is kind of like clockwork for the trail, so.
Perfect. Great.
And with that, I, next month, can we get interpretive signage on the Crown Zee Trail, Scappoose end as an agenda item? I think we'll have enough information to start working with you guys. I, I presented to city council, got some direction and obviously on your guys' end, developed the subcommittee or however you guys want to do it to work on the content for that signage.
I think we're gonna be pretty focused on Earth Day at the next meeting, so that's
And I'll leave that, that's up to you. Paul and I had talked about it some, but Scappoose, the city council said they're willing to fund. So I'll, I'll have that out there and I, ultimately up to you guys. I just don't want it to drag, drag on and get you guys frustrated that we're not making progress, but.
Is there information that you can send out to us?
Yes, um, it's, I, I wanted to meet with Dave Sukka to
Perfect.
a little bit of it to get to you guys, so
Yeah.
they feel good about it, but
Yeah.
involvement, obviously.
We would love to be involved. Right now, we do have, we've got a, we've got the grab horn, we've got the master planning and we've got Earth Day and annual town hall meeting, so I would say
I'll leave that up to you.
Yeah.
Um, but it will be ready by next month, so if you want to push to the following month, we go too much further, it's, it really doesn't matter.
I think we could
There's a little momentum to run on, to jump on there, at least with the council saying, hey, we'll provide some funding to help with the
If we can get it, I think May, I think we could do it in May.
Just so you know, I, I bet it'll be, even though it's simple, it'll probably take several months, up to six months to ultimately feel good about the content, actually put them in, so it doesn't have to be a, it's just quick discussions over each meeting.
Perfect.
Work in at a certain point.
That would be great, yeah.
Overall.
That would be more manageable, I think.
We're good, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, um, let's move back to Vista. So potentially taking out like the bike skills park pump track instead putting potential disc golf and then trying to acquire adjacent park space. Is there anything else we'd like to add to Vista? Ian?
I would argue taking out bike skills and pump track. Mountain biking, I think is a perfect spot for it. Seeing that it's a very large property, you can segregate a lot of those things so you never notice pump track, you know?
You think it would be too much?
We're hiking on a nice hiking trail.
Yeah, okay.
Plus, if we're having trail, did you say anything about horses? I know horses in here. If you have horses and bikes and people, they don't mix well. Lots of times you'll see nature parks like this where there's like a horse and bike only or
Yeah.
you know, like walking only or something like that, so I just think it's big enough, it's got enough value to mountain bikers would also uh, value to mountain bikers would also then use that.
Okay, so that you feel like they all need to go hand in, like they all need to come together?
Yeah, I, again, I think like leaving in the options of what can this potentially be, maybe it doesn't work as a disc golf, but now we didn't put in the master plan that it should be, you know, we should be exploring a pump track or bike skills as well. Just because we put those words in doesn't mean that we're ever gonna have to put everything into the park.
That's a good idea. Yeah, that's a good point.
Especially in undesigned, like, um, not really looked at. Farther off.
AJ?
I have, uh, I've gotta get going here fairly soon and it's, now we're over two hours. So, um, it'd be good to get things moving, otherwise I'm gonna have to leave in about 10 minutes.
Okay. Um, so we can say explore best op, best use between, um, mountain biking trails, bike skills park, pump track, and then, or disc golf. Something like that. Just explore those ideas.
That's a very broad statement.
Okay, all right.
And the other, and the other thing you gotta put in there is the biggest hurt, the biggest challenge to develop that site is is parking, very simple parking.
Yes.
It's right now it's a neighborhood park and, uh, a lot of the trails were, uh, are really popular with the locals. They use them for, for just hiking and stuff. And some of the biking stuff, there was a little bit of hesitation about the compatibility. I'm sure that can be worked out. There's enough area up there that you could do that. Just a little side comment.
Yes. Okay, let's move on to the PUD substation, UD substation. Um, is there anything that people, one wants to discuss on these points? Okay, let's move on.
What, what's proposed for that, anything or?
Um, just that it would have to, it'd have to go through a substantial amount of rezoning. And then it would be a little park that, um, and there's some diagrams. That would kind of look like, um, electric type thing.
Well, um, I thought it might, might make a pretty good place for a dog park and, um, but the truth is, is, you know, if this is a long-term plan, let's just take it out because, um, not long for, I, I'm not sure the next general manager's gonna support this being a park, so. You know, not sure it should even be on the list.
Um, okay. So would we rather have a dog park here?
Many acres is it? Half acre?
I mean, that even just to have something for, to have your dog go.
Yeah.
Bathroom.
Yeah.
Especially small dogs.
Okay.
I mean, we don't have anything on this side of town.
Yeah, okay. All right.
And, and I don't know how much work it would be. I know it's a commercial zone, which is, um, kind of silly. Um, but at the end of the day, we're building houses in our commercial zones. Particular sites surrounded by stores and restaurants. It's a half million dollar property and basically the UD was generous enough to say, hey, we'll let you use this for a, for a neighborhood park. You know, so long as we don't need it for future use. But like you say, you know, those general managers, they come and they go.
Well, a, a dog park would be just a fenced patch of green grass.
Yeah, it's all grass. There's not, you wouldn't have to do anything.
Probably be easier to get in than a park. That's right. Okay. So instead of a park, we, we would like to have that flagged as a potential dog park. Got it. Okay, and fire district site, do we need to discuss that anymore? Okay, all right. We will move on to, um, actually, and so I think, I think Darcy, that would, that would be the end of this site. Oh. Um, does Darcy need to be here for that? Okay. Um, sure.
Well, I just wanna go back one on, uh, thank you for this thing, this, this presentation. We talked about level of service and level of service, uh, is kind of feeding the 50-year plan. And now I'm the 50-year plan, um, parks representative. And, you know, it was a discussion by council about, um, that we weren't probably aiming high enough with level of service. Um, myself and I think, uh, the chair did some research. I mean, the national median average is for a, a size town of ours is 10 acres per 1,000 people. Um, and if you look at towns in the Oregon area that are our size, that they are at least aiming for that. And so I think we should be ourselves at least having that 10 acres per 1,000 as a guideline for ours as well.
Um, so the, one of the things that Darcy had spoke to was that the, the suggested level of service was something that was kind of more attainable for a parks our size. So one suggestion would be to have kind of like, um, something that is like a, our benchmark, like we won't go below, a kind of mid-range goal and then like a pie in the sky goal.
Right, yeah. And we, we've been discussing that, uh, that approach, um, just on the project team. Um, and kind of what that would look like and, and, you know, really it's, it's just a way of communicating. Um, what you would need to achieve in your park system if you made this target. If you adopted this target, this target kind of suggests you're going to be doing X, Y, and Z. So, you know, what, what I think would be helpful, it sounds like it would be helpful, um, is to have, uh, basically your current level of service, um, and what, what that means, right, what that encompasses. Having the rec, I wouldn't say recommended even at this point, but having a higher level that is, you know, potentially achievable. Maybe not with your current funding, but certainly, you know, a 20-year plan, you'd wanna, you'd wanna aim for something better than what you currently have. And then, you know, as you said, Kara, an aspirational, right? This is, this is the, yeah. So, and then to match up what that means, right? Because again, we're trying to create, uh, you know, a, an implementable, uh, realistic funding plan ultimately, uh, so that you can, uh, have a prioritized, um, list of things you would like to accomplish within a certain time period with a realistic funding package. Um, and then you, you implement it and you, you show progress and, you know, people are happy. If you, if you, you know, adopt an unrealistic standard that can't be achieved realistically, you know, then, then it's fine, uh, to say that that's aspirational, that's the ideal. Um, but it, it might not be the reality. And therein lies, I think, the disappointment for your community when there's an expectation that's set up uh, that they ultimately can't be met. So we'll, we'll bring more information back, uh, again, so you can kind of see what those, those levels are. Um, and I think this is maybe a good point for me to exit, so I'll just let you know that for the annual town meeting, you know, to communicate, um, really what the park system is, what the, um, you know, what the desired, uh, elements are to that, just like we've been discussing tonight. Um, and then have a conversation, a real frank conversation about what your current level of funding is and what that pays for. You know, the maintenance, the operation, the, you know, the, the manpower, the people power that actually, um, maintains and, and you know, creates the system that you have today. And then we'll talk about like, well, ideally though, you'd want more, right? You'd want more of all the good stuff. Um, so what does that mean? And what are your options, uh, for future funding? And then what more would that get you? So we're, we're gonna set up that, um, that discussion with, uh, the community at the annual town meeting and have some ability, again, to have some feedback, like, well, what, what is the priority then? You know, knowing you, you have, uh, the system, knowing that you have these opportunities for funding, what would you ideally want to see? And part of that, which we really didn't get to tonight, although I think Kara, you might've said it early on in the meeting. Do you want to spread out, uh, you know, your, um, your funding, your people power? Do you want to spread that out to the system that you have, the parks you have and do incremental improvements? Definitely maintenance. Or do you want to, you know, focus in on one big thing and maybe that's Grabhorn or maybe that's Chapman? You know, it, there's some, there's some things you can think about, like again, well, what do we really want to see? Are we kind of okay with what we have? Do we want to maintain what we have? Do we want to add some park benches here and there? Or, you know, do we want to focus in on a particular thing? So we're, we're formulating that, that now, not as recommendations, but really just formulating how to frame the question so that, that people understand really where we're at, where Scappus is at. Um, and then provide, you know, some additional feedback. On the.
I just like to, I answer that is that I've heard, I've seen questions like that before. And it's usually steered toward, it's gonna cost more money, which then gets people to be afraid that it's gonna raise their taxes.
I think if we had more data of like, go ahead, Paul.
So for us to be the median basically means average. Like, if, if we can't even strive to be average, I mean, that is scary to me. And without knowing the entire budget and where we allocate stuff and how many consultants we pay for and everything else, it's not a fair question to citizens.
Yes, but if we potentially are trying to buy so much land and then we can't, we don't have money to put anything in it.
I, I, another question would be, when you go to other cities and you compare what they have versus us, do you feel that you want to be more like this town? And it, it has nothing to do with them trying to decide the money because they, we don't know all the information.
Correct.
That's all I'm saying.
I think that you have an idea where it's kind of like, okay, here are these different level services. And this is what it would, this would kind of, what it would look like, big picture, because we have to put that in perspective, though.
But the respect, they don't have the perspective. I mean, most people are upset about the EV chargers because they think that it's costing money. Our, their taxpayers, their, their tax money. And it's not. So no one has enough information to, so they're gonna, the data you're gonna get can be skewed by saying, we're good, we're fine, like, we don't want to spend any more money and, uh, you know, it's costing me. I don't want to spend any more money or my taxes to go up. If I, if I say yes here, my taxes might go up. And that's a fear factor. And that's what I'm getting at here.
Yeah, but then I, I guess, you know, we were talking about Concomly earlier. And we, we ha- have some good information about how much that park actually costs, right? Just to, to develop it and how much the grant was and how much match the city had to have. I mean, that's a real world example of, you know, a beautiful park, uh, but it wasn't without, you know, some funding behind it. It wasn't volunteer-driven, you know, it wasn't, it didn't magically happen. So that's kind of, again, I, I appreciate what you're saying, Paul. You, we don't want to have that conversation in a vacuum. We will be bringing to the public the conversation, some idea of current funding. Um, and some idea of, of what, you know, the, the aspirational, um, park system, you know, would entail, would need. And, and it really, it, it will come down to, um, unfortunately, it will come down to finding new funding sources. So I don't know how you can avoid that conversation. It's not meant to be fearful. It's meant to be, I think, more, what Kara said, more to be realistic. So you don't set up unrealistic expectations.
I would like to hear from the other members where they would like to go on this discussion.
I need to go so I can talk about Earth Day or not?
Well, I, I don't want to just leave and not finish this conversation. So I can, I can update on Earth Day. Yeah, okay.
With the, uh, I guess if I want to, I'll just weigh in, you know, the neat thing about the annual town meeting is it gives city an opportunity to talk about a challenge that they have. Get public feedback. And I think that the way you're framing this, it, I think it's gonna give them an opportunity to have and give us that feedback. But a big part of that is to talk about the lack of funding that the city has and, um, and be real honest, a lot of the, you know, we do all this park maintenance, a lot of that's paid by the water bill. General fund barely covers the police department. And, um, so I, I know personally that the city's finances are real stretched and, um, they don't really have any dedicated funding for parks. Be a little general fund, but very, very little. And truth is, is that a lot of the stuff that's in this plan is pie in the sky unless it's funded by grants. Or if the city finds another way to, to pay for it. I, I mean, honestly, that's where, where I think we're gonna end up.
Yeah.
So that's all I have to say about that.
Ian and Terry, I'd like to hear your input.
Um, I think that le- level of service is metric you look at to see how your open spaces function for your community. And while we might be on the low end, our, our parks function pretty well for our community. A lot of funk, a lot of different amenities and a lot of different ways of using our open spaces. Um, so I think there is really good rationale to talk about reality in the master plan. I think there's also really good rationale to talk about aspirations. Because we don't know in the future what kind of funding there. So why couldn't we put, explore additional funding opportunities as they become available to increase level of service, to increase the amount of open space or park space that we have? Doesn't necessarily mean we have to, to purchase it and you have to build it and you have to do everything right away. But if nobody wants to come and donate some land, don't say, sorry, we already have enough space. You take the land and you figure out how to deal with it. Uh, as, you know, as a, just an example.
Yeah.
So I, I do think adding the idea of level of service to get us to that medium while still framing it in the master plan, like this is the reality of where we're at. This is the reality of what our community can do with our open spaces. But we always want to strive higher.
Right.
We always want a greater level of service. Well, how can we explore that?
Level of service goes down to amenities. I mean, one of the reasons why there's no softball fields is because we didn't, in 1998, we didn't have a level of service that said we need so many softball fields. Well, we can't afford it in 1998. We don't have any, even a park. But if we would've said, the level of service for our town for our softball fields is, it's like point five per 1,000. So we'd have those softball fields right now. Like, that's what I'm getting at. Like, we have these barriers in front of us. There was barriers in 1998. But in 1998, Sandy put, set, they wanted to have 17 acres per 1,000. They were the same size as us. They're at 21 acres per thousand now. So the idea that there's barriers today, so we don't want to put them out there, is setting our next generations up for failure. That's what I'm, that's what I'm afraid of.
Well, I think like you just said, they had a goal and they exceeded it.
Right, the goal, which was above the national average. And our goal now is even below the national average, which is the below average. So, so you have mediocre and then you have exceptional, and we are below mediocre in our plan, in our plan. That's, that's my concern.
Okay. Uh, Terry?
Well, the only thing I had to add is I was real disappointed that our parks and rec committee really doesn't show any income. I always look at, you know, what do you gotta spend to get this, you know, what, we don't have enough money. That's a big problem. And we don't have any money coming in for what we're doing. So I would like to see more things that bring money into our committee and make it easier to do things.
So I, I would, I would still say.
One more thing, if we, if, if JJ wasn't sitting here and two years ago, we said, we want to have an amazing Earth Day. And what we want to do is have this thing, it's gonna be so cool and so big. We would've said, we don't have money for Earth Day. We can't do something like that. That's impossible. Because there was no money. Well, guess what? We're gonna have an amazing Earth Day event.
We are.
If, if we would've said, we want the, we want movies in the park to be our premier summer event. And five years ago, we would've said, if JJ wasn't here, we don't have money for movies. We can't do that. And guess what? It's our most successful summer event. So that's what I'm getting at is like, let's set this bar and let's find, let's find ways to get it done. If we don't set the bar, we won't reach for it. That's, that's my concern.
I'm, I'm not saying that I disagree. I think I would just like more information on, on what that would mean for funding and, yes.
Seeing as I'm still here. All right, so as I've said over and over and over again, the way that this actually gets accomplished is creating a park and rec district. That's how you do it. That is how people raise money. And so that is what has to happen. In order for that to happen, you have to have a compelling reason for the citizens to vote for that and to support it with taxes. And until you have that, nothing's gonna happen.
And I guess the last thing I'm gonna say, I guess, is that, you know, you, you gotta walk before you can run. Bottom line is, if you go back in a very many years, Scappus had like made great progress in the last handful of years. And I think the city's focused to try and, and make more progress. And I think if you look at the projects we talked about that are in the plan, I'd like to see more, but, um, I don't think it's, we're probably gonna revisit this plan in 10 years. But I think there's probably more plan. plans, projects on this plan than we're going to be able to afford anyway. And so I think we just do the best damn job we can to meet those needs and continue to build that momentum and support from the community, so that they're going to be excited about helping figure out how to, how to truly fund it. Because at the end of the day, that, you can have all the aspirations in the world, but if you don't have the funding, it just works on a, on a plan.
So I think that this is going to be a topic at the annual town hall meeting, and our next meeting will be after that. So I think we could table this discussion for now, and then discuss it again when we get that data. Sound good? Everybody? Okay. Thank you, Darcy.
Thank you very much. It's great, great hanging in there. It's a really good discussion, lots of really, really good information and feedback. So I appreciate that, and I, my plan is to come back to you in May, because I don't think we're going to have enough time between the, the meeting, the annual town meeting on the 8th, and your, your April meeting. So that's, that's the plan right now, is to come with, with the feedback from the community, what we've heard, what we've kind of, you know, put together at your May meeting.
I do have one quick question. A rec center has something that has also come up, and we don't have, that, that wasn't in here. Does that need to be in here for that to be considered in the final plan? That is something that I think that citizens have talked about a lot, was a rec center, even though we don't necessarily have property for it right now.
We have some information in the needs assessment, that that was something that has come up. We have a bit of language that it seems like it's a, it's not something that, how do I put this? For the amount of, I'm sorry, sorry, Paul, for the amount of cost that it would to build it and maintain it, you're really talking about serving a much larger population and area than just Scappus. So for, for, for local needs, it doesn't seem to be something that is kind of right fit for your population, but.
What about potentially putting, because I, I think that we would all like to have some sort of language in there. Okay. Aspirational or recreational hub, or something. It doesn't, I'm not necessarily thinking like a giant YMCA, but I would say that the one in St. Helens is just a tiny little building.
If we put it aspirational, that might have enough people talking about it, so when the school district works on their plan, you know, it'll be on top of mind. It'll be like, wow, the parks, this is part of the plan. There's some momentum behind it. Hey, what do you think about it, Mike? Hey, guess what? I mean, that's going to take those things.
I think, I think we need to have some sort of, yeah, as aspirational.
Yeah, and I, I do think that is in the plan language, not, of course, we don't have a draft plan for you yet, but the needs assessment does have that conversation, and it is somewhat reflected in some of the feedback from the survey, I believe. I could be misstating myself. However, it's not associated with the site. So what we've been going through is site, is that, site recommendations, right?
That's, that's, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure this wasn't our last, our last opportunity.
I think it's great you can include it, because I know the mayor's been talking to the school district, and there's, you know, the other problem the city has is, they, they don't have adequate, they rent space for, for office, and that could help solve that problem, too. And so I think having it in there.
Yes.
It's an opportunity to work on it.
Right, and partnerships, that's in the needs assessment. That will be carried forward into the, into the plan, for sure.
Perfect.
Okay.
As long as that's in there. Okay, all right, now you are free to go. Thank you.
Have a good night. Good night, all. Thank you.
Okay, so that's kind of the discussion of the community center for now. Let's talk about Earth Day, and then let's, yes, Isaac?
I think it looks like a couple members are getting ready to go. I think you should do a check-in as a committee. It is now 8:30.
Yes, so all we have.
I would also like to remind you all as well, that you have next meeting open agenda items, because there's no.
All we have is a quick thing on Earth Day.
Thank you. So, Earth Day's happening. We need to talk about the table. Remember that? If no, we're going to have a table at the.
Oh, no, we are just going to have a table at the annual town hall meeting, and we're going to talk about Earth Day.
Okay. Earth Day coming up on the 23rd. It is going to be awesome. We've got tons of sponsors. 22nd, sorry. It's after 8:30. I'm falling asleep.
Everybody.
Community totally got into it, because it is about the community, not some soulless thing. So we are going to have all kinds of fun stuff, including picking up trash. I don't know if that's fun.
I still need two team leaders to pick up trash. You've got to sell that a little bit better, JJ.
It's great, picking up trash. Oh, well, Fred Meyer's going to be donating pastries, orange juice, and I got Starbucks to donate coffee. We are also going to be getting these fabulous goodie bags, recycled, of course, because it is the environmental day. All of our sponsors are going to have swag. We're going to have free hot dogs, hamburgers, and pizza. So that's going to be a draw. Live music, electric bike, we're giving a brand-new electric bike away, compliments of Columbia River PUD. And of course, we are going to be christening the charging stations that I've worked on for three years. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Tesla, for making all that happen.
Okay, so I will be, the Scappus website is not updated yet with.
Little flyers in case you guys want them or do you care?
With the, all the information. I will send that out as soon as it is, and then if, I would love to have two Parks and Rec members who will be leading cleanups, so consider it, please. Thank you.
Can't commit, because I don't have my baseball schedule.
Okay, all right, as soon as it's able, okay.
I know we're playing games on Saturday.
You can talk about this on email, because it's not, it's not policy.
All right, everyone, have a good night.
On record, everybody, on record, you can talk about coordinating via email. Kara, on the record, you talked about coordinating Earth Day via email without causing a public meeting. It's coordination of a volunteer event. It is not, to the public interest.
So I need to say that?
No, I needed to. Now you can close the meeting.
Okay, all right. All right, meeting is closed.